Members of the board are present, either via Zoom or in chambers. Can we get the announcement of the interpreter, please?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Estriaki para los servicios de intérprete en español.
And with that, we're going to jump into our 1:30 scheduled matters, which begin with a briefing and update on the fires in Monterey County.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and board members. Um, we have about five items we'd like to cover that are all related to the, uh, fire situation. And I know the board members are aware of a lot of this, but we thought it would be helpful to go over this again with the public, um, uh, this afternoon. Uh, and the first item is an overview on the fire situation in general. And I really appreciate at the last minute, we were able to get, um, uh, Emily Smith, the PIO from CAL FIRE to join us. And I believe she's out at Toro Park with Kelsey Scanlon, and there's Kelsey. So I believe Emily is there too. Thank you both. Uh, Chief Feltcher would like to have joined us, but I know he had another commitment this afternoon. So if we could ask Emily to start with an overview of the fire situation. Thank you, Emily.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. Currently, the River Fire and the Carmel Fire, um, were making good headway. We are getting lines put in with the resources on the incident. Uh, we've had a more stable weather pattern come through, um, so that has helped us immensely. There are a few areas, um, within the River Fire that, um, what we call is islands. They have some vegetation that still is in the process of burning out, but it's in a, it's in the perimeter of the fire. So there's still some smoke generation and some flames being seen from that. Um, but our operations is aware of that and, um, and at the, the incident for that situation. Um, I would like to give you some numbers on the River Fire. It's currently at forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-four acres at thirty-three percent containment. There have been eight structures that have been destroyed and thirteen outbuildings. We do have what we call is, um, a DINS team, which is a damage inspection team that is out, surveying the damaged and destroyed structures. And I'll refer back to Kelsey a little bit on that, um, information. There are currently, um, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five people evacuated, um, on the River incident, as well as we have one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight firefighters working. On the Carmel incident, the current acreage is six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five acres at thirty percent contained. There are thirty-five structures that have been destroyed and sixteen outbuildings, um, that have been destroyed. We do have nine hundred and six firefighters working on that incident. And we are in the process, uh, for both the River and the Carmel of doing repopulation, which means getting folks back home, um, that have been evacuated. And I'll be open for questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kelsey, are you able to stick around for a little while on this call? I mean, uh, Emily, I'm sorry, Emily, can you stay with us in case there are other questions?
Yes, in case there's questions, yes.
Great, thank you. And Kelsey, since you're right there with her, if you could talk briefly about the reentry process, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. So the reentry process is, um, fairly complex and requires coordination amongst a variety of different agencies that all have to sign off on the safety of that particular zone. Um, the goal is always first and foremost, safety of the people doing the assessment of the zones, as well as for the public to go back into those areas. We, um, understand and hear that the public wants to get back to their homes as quick as possible. Uh, but ultimately, their safety is our number one priority. Um, and there are very few exceptions to, um, compromising that priority. So we appreciate the public's patience as we, uh, go through a very rigorous process of coordinating with utilities, environmental health, the sheriff's office, uh, Public Works, um, and, um, other companies like PG&E and Verizon to make sure that the area is, uh, safe for the public to, to enter. Um, some days, uh, it's, it's super easy for us to clear those zones. And then other days will come back and find that there was something we didn't see before that needs to be cleared, like a tree that might be in the public right of way. Um, so it, it's a constantly changing and dynamic situation. But, uh, we are as eager as the public is to get them back in their homes and provide them the resources that they need to, to be there successfully.
Thank you, thank you, Kelsey. And now, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to hear from the sheriff regarding the evacuation status. I believe he's on the line.
Yes, thank you. I, uh, Captain Felcher calling me right now. Um, we, uh, we evacuated a total of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one people out of both Carmel and River Fires, thirteen thousand, just over thirteen thousand homes. Uh, we've repopulated, uh, areas of River Road and Las Palmas area, Pine Canyon area, and parts of the Carmel, the Northern End of Carmel Fire. I know they're working right now, looking at, uh, other spots, uh, particularly down towards the Southern End of River Road and other parts of the Carmel Fire that they're going to try and populate. So, um, that, more on that will be coming out later today. Uh, we, the sheriff's office has demobilized our patrol staffing. We are, we, we still have staffing out there that'll be patrolling the areas that are still under evacuation order. Uh, we've canceled our mutual aid. Um, and again, I, I can never thank enough our partners here in Monterey County who responded with us, as, along with our regional partners up from Oakland, San Mateo County, Fresno County, and Kings County, who came out to help us with evacuations and just holding down the evacuated areas. Uh, again, we'll be waiting on our partners from CAL FIRE and other agencies to let us know when we can, uh, start populating the other affected areas. But we keep getting great news on the fires' progress. And, um, we're looking forward to getting everybody back into their homes when we can safely do it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, and now we'd like to get a brief update from Marcy Castro, uh, from Department of Social Services on the, the shelter situation. Marcy? Chairman, we're just making sure she's on the call. We thought she was, so.
Um, this is Lori Medina. I'm going to text her now and see if she can jump on really quickly.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you might, we could move to the ne- the last item then, which is the Disaster Service Worker Update. As the public may or may not know, all county employees are disaster service workers by law. And we were already, really stretched pretty thin with the COVID response. And when the fires activated, we realized that we needed to really bolster our ranks even further. So, uh, Irma Ramirez-Bow and Ariana Hurtado from HR have been doing a terrific job making sure we have access to adequate, uh, staff resources. So, uh, Julian, if we could ask either Irma or Ariana to go ahead and admit them, that would be great.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Irma Ramirez-Bow. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we've been doing in HR for, um, um, having all our employees who are, um, disaster service workers. So with that said, I want to share with you that last week on Thursday, I sent out an email to Z-Everyone asking all employees to complete a disaster survey, um, response, in response for the fire. We were, um, people did respond, um, Thursday evening. And we had approximately by the next day, Friday morning, we had a little over nine hundred response to the survey. The survey had information that what we were looking for is to see if people were interested, if they could be called out, either as a first response, a second response, or a third response. We were looking to see if they had any special language skills or any special, um, skills, um, that they could offer, or even, um, if, if they had training, um, and had, had they completed the training with the last three years. In addition to that, we, uh, were able to place individuals on Friday, um, at the Monterey Conference Center, because we stood up the center, um, and we had beds and cots. And we deployed fifty individuals from that group, um, to assist us in setting up the conference center. So on Monday, our CAO, Charles McKee, sent out again a reminder to all our employees, reminding them that it was a requirement to complete the survey, as all county employees are disaster service workers. Um, as of yesterday evening, we looked at the number of how many people have responded to the survey. And half of our workforce, we have a little over twenty-four hundred employees who have responded to the survey. Of the twenty-four hundred, fifteen, uh, twelve hundred have indicated that they would be happy to assist in, um, at first call for whatever we need. So we're, we're happy that that is, um, that that was the response. Um, we are literally even today still getting, uh, people responding to the survey. So, um, the goal is to have every county employee complete the survey, because it is a requirement. Let's see. What we intend to use, the list that, uh, that we, that we get once everyone submits a response, is that we're going to be utilizing this list to place individuals in key areas for the Office of Emergency Services, whether it be in their planning section, their logistics section, operations, whatever they need. The Office of Emergency Services, Jerry Malay, has been working with me. He's given me the information regarding what are the positions and the duties. Um, and so we are going to carefully match those individuals and their skill sets to deploy them to be that, um, resource for that, um, for the Office of Emergency Services. So with that said, um, that is all I have. Does any board member have a question for me?
And Mr. Chairman, uh, if you want, we can take questions. We, we're still trying to track Marcy Castro down. Lori Medina, I believe, is on the call. And Lori, I don't know if you're prepared to give a shelter update?
Marcy said she just got into the meeting. She was having a little bit of technical difficulty, but she says she's in now. Uh, I don't see her as a panelist. She might be in the generals. Oh, here she is. I see her now. Okay. Marcy, take it away.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I'm pleased to provide a report for the evacuation centers. Uh, we have an evacuation center in Salinas, that, or at the Salinas Valley Fairgrounds in King City. We currently have three guests that are staying there. We also have the Carmel Middle School, and that also currently has three guests staying there. And that has just become a Red Cross official, uh, shelter. Um, we also have a referral system that is placing, uh, people who are in the evacuation order zones at a hotel in Isilamar. And we have just, um, decided that that information will be released to the public. Anybody who is, uh, currently in a evacuation order zone who needs care and shelter can go to either the Monterey Conference Center or the Carmel Middle School, or the Salinas Valley Fairgrounds in King City, and pick up a referral for a hotel room at Isilamar Conference Center that also includes meals at the conference center as well. So they have choices. You can, um, stay at a congregate site. Uh, we also still have some vouchers for RVs up at Laguna Seca. Or you can stay at a non-congregate site in Isilamar in Pacific Grove.
Thank you, Marcy. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our overview. I believe the CAL FIRE PIO had to leave to go to another meeting, but I believe the rest of the staff are on the line if you have questions, or if the board members have questions.
Great. We do want to thank, uh, Battalion Chief Emily, uh, Smith from, uh, CAL FIRE for all that she's done throughout this fire. She's been at our briefings every morning, uh, and she's been a great source of information and connection, uh, through Mia Carroll as well, to make sure that we get accurate information out to the community. Uh, so again, to Battalion Chief Emily Smith, we appreciate all that you've done. At this point, are there any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Adams, old school hand up?
Thank you. So I had a question for, um, Irma. And it is regarding the responses that you're getting from, uh, the, uh, I know I said student body, from the, uh, employees. Is there any kind of, uh, like a profile that you're seeing? I'm, I'm really just sort of curious, is it younger people, older people? And in addition to that, is there any absence of something that we need? Do you have like many of the skills that are required? Or is there one thing that you haven't been able to find anyone to be able to do?
Thank you for your question. Um, I am going to have Ari jump in. Um, our questions, again, as I kind of had mentioned to you, were very defined. Um, and so Ari, if you could share with the board, in fact, um, I don't know how difficult it would be for you to be able to share with the board the actual survey. Because you can see that, um, there were categories that we asked employees to complete, whether there were management, supervisory technicians, um, again, as I mentioned, regarding the language and any kind of special skills. But at this point, um, are we having any challenging and filling any of the positions? I can tell you what, the answer is no to that question. When we get a, a request, whether it be for shelter from Marcy or Kelsey, we're able to fill. We can deploy the employees and we just deploy them. We are working with Mike Dur, and there's a, a woman right under him. And I, I don't know operationally what her title is, but Angelica has been working very closely with Michelle Gomez, one of my staff members, um, who are, who's providing her the list. So, um, at this point, I would say that we have not been having any challenges to date. Ari, do you want to add anything, anything to that? And could you share the survey?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Chair Lopez, board members. I'm going to bring up the survey briefly here. As Irma mentioned, the survey really was geared to get the general information from employees. Uh, very basic information, just their contact info, the category of job that they hold with the county, just so that we can better match as, um, the needs arise, the department in which they work in. This is particularly important, because we do recognize that there are certain departments that have been heavily impacted staffing-wise, um, as a result of COVID, uh, the COVID emergency. So we're wanting to pay particular attention and not deploy employees from certain departments, again, recognizing the staffing impacts they, they're already undergoing. Um, we ask for the city in which they live in. Again, this is important for specific locations, like the evacuation center that was set up in King City. We want to try to, um, target employees that live in the area, so they don't have long commutes, um, to report to these, um, sites. Uh, we also ask for, um, like Irma mentioned, special language skills that they may have, their supervisor's contact information. We want to make sure we're staying in contact with supervisors, so that they know what's going on with their employees. And then the call priorities. So if they want to be deployed first, second, or third. Um, and then also the shift priority, if they have any special requests for the shifts that they're assigned to, training, uh, in relation to disaster service. And then any additional special skills that they, they feel may be helpful during the fire emergencies or other areas in the EOC that they may be interested in serving as a disaster service worker. And these, again, may be more on a longer term. So that's just a quick snapshot of the survey that was sent out.
The other thing I thought that maybe might be important for, for you all to know, you know, we do send these communications via email, but, um, believe it or not, IT and Eric's team is incredible. So I do want to bring to you that they have developed an app, um, where we can do a mass text to those designated individuals. So not only can we deploy sending an email, but if it's an email after hours, and maybe people may not be on their email, we could actually, because they provide us with their cellphone, um, with the assistance of IT, send a, um, text message saying you're being deployed to such, such location. So IT, again, has just been such a great partner with us. Um, so, um, and I, I don't know if Eric is on the call, but he could share, but we worked directly with Perez and Hidarito from his team on Friday when we had to deploy people on. So wanted to share that with you.
Any other questions from board members at this point?
Mr. Chairman, uh, one other update real quickly. I'm sorry, um, Carl Holm is on the, on the call. And knowing that individuals who have lost structures or homes are going to be very interested or concerned about how they go about rebuilding, uh, I believe Carl's prepared to give the board a quick update on how that would be handled.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we're going to follow the similar format, uh, that we had with the Sabranas Fire. Um, and so just for, for the public's benefit, what that entails is that, uh, anybody coming in and, and, and having a rebuild, uh, whether it be, you know, in total or in partial, they will be given priority, um, in the, in the plan check process. Uh, the fees are going to be waived. Um, we will work with them if there's any, you know, insurance, uh, claims and as far as costs, uh, we will work with them on that. Frida Escobar is my, uh, my point of contact with that. And anybody who, who has questions can contact Frida, and she will personally help them through, through the process of all the permitting.
Thank you, Mr. Holm.
Includes our staff update if there are any questions from board members.
Great. So turning back to the board, any additional comments or questions before we go to the public? Then at this point, I'm going to turn and see if we have any public comment on this presentation. Seeing nobody in the room. I'll remind folks via the Zoom, if you wish to comment, please use the raise hand function. Uh, star nine will do that from a landline. And, uh, there's a tab at the very bottom of your screen that says raise hand. It'll let us know you wish to be recognized. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Uh, I did, is Kelsey still on the line? I believe she's jumped off. She's on her own. Well, Kelsey, if you're there, I just wanted you to know that I did accuse you earlier while you were not on the meeting of being a robot that runs on coffee. So I don't like to do that behind people's backs. So I did want to do that publicly, let you know that I did accuse you of being a robot. So we'll figure out the truth.
Thank you.
Oh, and you're eating a sandwich to prove me wrong? I see that.
It's a taco. I run on tacos too.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any other comments from board members? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda. And our next item is fifteen, which is a Development Evaluation System Program Presentation Public Hearing, presented by Ana Quangas, senior planner.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to wait for, there we go. Now it's loaded. Um, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lopez and Board of Supervisors, Ana Quanga and Brandon Swanson, RMA Planning Staff, here to present on the Development Evaluation System, or DES. The DES is part of the county's general plan implementation work, as it would implement general plan policy LU 1.19. The purpose of this item is to recommend the Board of Supervisors consider and adopt an ordinance amending the Monterey County Inland Zoning Ordinance to establish the DES regulations and to consider and adopt a resolution to approve the DES procedure manual. Staff will begin the presentation by briefly addressing background information to explain the purpose of the DES. Then we will walk through examples to show how the evaluation works. The two thousand and ten general plan focuses growth and development in areas with existing infrastructure and services. However, growth outside of those areas may still be possible based on zoning. With this in mind, the DES has been created as a tool to identify extraordinary developments outside of priority development areas. For example, the proposed developments already require analysis for consistency with goals and policies of the general plan. Development subject to the DES would then require an additional analysis to measure how the project goes beyond the minimum requirements, providing the decision maker with another set of evidence to decide whether or not a project should be approved. This slide shows the community areas identified in the general plan as priority areas for development. They are located in the northern portion of the county. These areas have existing infrastructure wi- and with the except, exception of Castroville and Tular, they are located adjacent to cities. This slide shows the rural centers identified in the general plan. These are also priority areas for development, as they have existing higher intensity uses and the potential for improved infrastructure. Except for River Road, these areas are located in the southern portion of the county. The next few slides provides an example to show how the DES would work. So let's say a fictional developer submitted a theoretical project application for a large development in the county. The first example goes over question one A of the DES score sheet guide, which evaluates development in light of affordable housing provided. Part of the theoretical project includes construction of one hundred and twenty residential units, and fifty percent of those units will be affordable. How would the project score? Question one A of the DES gives two points to projects with forty-five percent or more affordable housing units that remain affordable in perpetuity. By allocating fifty percent of the units as affordable and submitting a lotting exhibit, draft inclusionary housing agreement, and draft deed restriction, the project would receive two points. In addition, a condition of approval requiring recordation of a final inclusionary housing agreement and deed restriction would be incorporated as part of the project approval. The second example shown on the slide goes over question two point F of the DES score sheet guide, which evaluates development in light of infrastructure. Part of the theoretical project includes construction of a fire station. The nearest station is in a city that is about forty-five minutes away. How would the project score? Question two F of the DES gives five points to projects that provide critical emergency infrastructure in deficient areas. By including a fire station in the proposed development and submitting documentation of the current fire response times in the project area, the project would receive five points. The third and final example goes over question five point B of the DES score sheet guide and evaluates development in light of balance of uses. The theoretical project includes construction of a commercial center. How would the project score? Question five B of the DES gives three points to mixed-use developments that provide commercial uses to serve the needs of the community. By delineating the commercial center on the project plans and including a draft general development plan that outlines permitted uses, like a small market and small businesses, the project would receive three points. Although the DES applies to a very large area of the county, permit history shows that out of the nine hundred discretionary permits initialized between October twenty-six, two thousand and ten, and October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, only eleven of those were subject to policy LU 1.19. And out of the eleven projects, four were not delayed because of the DES. Findings and evidence for consistency with policy LU 1.19 were made, and the projects were approved. The remaining seven were either, or are either pending submission of the formal application, were deemed incomplete due to other reasons, or have been denied due to a, due to project issues. Staff received comments regarding how the DES would affect commercial-only projects. Table three point six of the general plan FER shows that the inland unincorporated area of the county is approximately one million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one acres in size. Of that, five thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven acres are zoned commercial, and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty acres are zoned industrial. That's approximately point five three percent of the total acreage. Therefore, a very small percentage of commercial-only projects would be subject to the DES. In the last five years, numerous workshops, discussions, and focus group meetings have been held. After this work was completed and the DES regulations were finalized, they were brought before the Planning Commission for consideration on July eighth, two thousand and twenty. As directed by the Board of Supervisors, the regulations presented to the commission were modified to clarify that the DES score does not limit the appropriate authority's discretion on a project. The commission found the draft regulations acceptable and adopted a resolution recommending the Board of Supervisors consider the general plan, final environmental impact report, and addendum, adopted ordinance adding chapter twenty-one ninety-two to title twenty-one of the Monterey County Code, and approve the DES manual. Subsequent to the July eighth Planning Commission hearing, staff made non-substantive- staff made non-substantive edits to the ordinance consisting of minor form and number changes and eliminating definitions that were already defined in section twenty-one zero-six of title twenty-one or in the Monterey County General Plan. Clarification to the second evaluation milestone identified as the formal application evaluation was made in response to public comment received. Section twenty-one ninety-two zero-four zero-eight-two was modified as shown here on the bottom of the slide. The language states that the formal application score would also be provided if an application is deemed complete by operation of law. As directed by the Board of Supervisors, staff has also prepared a two-page informational brochure that provides a quick explanation of the DES. This slide shows the outside of the brochure, which includes a purpose statement on the left, the applicable regulations in the middle, and contact information for questions on the right. This slide shows the inside of the brochure and highlights the project applicability and evaluation criteria on the right, the evaluation milestones in the middle, and how the appropriate authority considers the DES scores and projects that would be available to be exempt from the DES, shown here on the right. Staff recommends that the Board consider an addendum together with the Monterey County General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, certified by the Board of Supervisors in October two thousand and ten. The DES ordinance implements policy LU 1.19 by enacting regulations to evaluate certain developments located outside of priority areas and would not result in an increased density of development beyond what was analyzed in the FEIR. Points are earned when an application can demonstrate project components, when they can demonstrate project components provide certain improvements beyond the minimum requirements. Projects with significant unavoidable impacts would result in subtraction of points. The addendum has been prepared to make minor technical changes to the project analyzed in the general plan FEIR. So based on the staff report that, that was provided, the information presented at today's hearing and as recommended by the Planning Commission in resolution two zero oh two-two, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors consider addendum number three together with a previously certified final impact report for the two thousand and ten general plan, adopt an ordinance adding chapter twenty-one ninety-two to title twenty of the Monterey County Code and amending multiple sections of title twenty-one to establish regulations for the Development Evaluation System and adopt a resolution to approve the County of Monterey Development Evaluation System Manual. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Ms. Quanga. First, I'll go to board members and see if there's any questions from board members. Seeing no hands going up, we'll go to the public comment portion of this item and see if we have any public comments on this item. I see none in the room. I'm going to go to the Zoom. I see a hand up from Anthony Lombardo. We'll give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a three-minute public comment with this board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Anthony Lombardo, I'm not actually representing any client. I just have some comments. We've sent you a couple of letters, one in May and one a few days ago regarding the system. This is not, my comments are not a criticism of the staff or the work the staff has done. I think they've been left with a more or less untenable job of trying to figure out how to make this work. As Anna mentioned to you earlier, she gave you an example of a hypothetical project that would provide fifty percent inclusionary housing, getting two points in their evaluation system for doing that. The problem is, the way the evaluation system is described is that is all that project could get for providing fifty percent inclusionary housing out of a total possible of thirty housing-related points. So obviously, a two out of thirty is an abysmally failing grade under this proposed system for a project which would be incredibly, you know, beneficial. Similarly, a fire station, she mentioned five point, getting five points, that's out of a potential of twenty-five points. Basically, the way the system is set up, there is no project that would ever receive a passing score. And she's, Anna was correct, that you could give, grant a variance. That's not exactly the correct term, but you know what I mean. You could approve a project anyway. But it's one more thing to add an impediment, add cost, and add uncertainty to an already difficult development process. I'd like to close by just giving you a couple of examples. I ran through the system using a couple of, three examples of projects to score them to see what would happen, just to give you an idea. One is the fire station that's located at the corner of Highway sixty-eight in Lorelles Grade. And that, had that been subject to this process, it would have received a total score under my, on my calculation of thirty-two out of a possible ninety points. So it's a failing, a failing score. The, the Rancho Cielo project, very beneficial project to our community, it would have received, it would have done better, well, not as well as the fire station, it would have gotten thirty points out of a potential ninety, failing score. And if, if those of you are familiar with the Laguna Seca Office Park on the, at the corner of York, York Road and Highway sixty-eight, that project has a number of office buildings, including the, the offices of the Monterey Bay Regional Air Pollution Control District. I, I, I received approval recently or got approval for a client for a small office building located in that office park. That project under the system would have received a score of twenty-two. For example, because it fails to provide affordable housing, which is thirty of the points potential. And only if you provide every kind of affordable housing you could see in the list. And it doesn't do that. It's a commercial project. So there seems to be a base, in closing, I'd just like to say there seems to be a basic disconnect between reality of, of projects and how they are proposed and what they consist of and this, this construct of this Development Evaluation System in that before we rush into something that's going to create a lot more work for staff and decision makers and the board, I think hopefully the board can, can see, ask the staff to go back and come up with some examples of how actual projects would have been scored to see if that's the goal.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there any other members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom? Seeing no hands going up, I'm going to bring it back to this board. I see Supervisor Phillips has his hand up. Supervisor Phillips.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good idea to have. And it's obviously, we don't have a choice about it. We, we have to do it. And I, I like the idea that we have some criteria set up to, to give some guidance to, to people on it. But I do share the concerns about how in practice it's going to work and whether it's going to be a hurdle, especially for some ag employment housing projects that I know there are going to be down the pipe that would fall under this. So I, from a practical standpoint, how, how a project would, would, I'd like to kind of understand a little bit better because I, I do have some concerns that it may be a hurdle for necessary development that we need.
Thank you, Supervisor. We're going to go to Supervisor Alejo next. Supervisor Alejo.
Yeah, first of all, I had a couple of questions just for staff. If, if they could explain how those, how those points were allocated in this system. Was it subjective to giving two versus five? I mean, how, how did that get devised? And also, what, what other counties use a similar system or have, have adopted a similar system as the one being proposed?
Mr. Chair, Brandon Swanson, the RMA Planning. I can, I can start with the answer to the first, first part of the question from Supervisor Alejo. So the points and the categories, as Ms. Quanga mentioned in her presentation, those were developed over the five-year period when we held stakeholder meetings with members from both the development community and from the, call it the environmental community if you'd like, including actually Dale Ellis from Mr. Lombardo's office. We had members from the Carmel Valley Association, members of the ag community. So those points in the, the categories were developed through community meetings. We did surveys with them and, and took the pulse to see where people felt the most important elements of development were. So those scores were created out of essentially a weighted system. Things like affordable housing through all those workshops, not only with the stakeholder meetings, but also then subsequent workshops with the Planning Commission. Things like affordable housing were deemed to be the most important. That's why you'll see that the affordable housing category is thirty points of the seventy. And so the various weights and things like that were based off of feedback from the public through that process. As to your question about other, other counties and communities, Ms. Quanga may have some information on that, but I don't, the DES is unique to Monterey County. I know there, there probably are other counties that have similar ways of evaluating, but this, this is really meant to be like a quantifiable rubric essentially for doing the planning work on projects outside of these areas where we would typically like to see or want to see development based on the general plan. So I, I don't know if any county has an exact model or something even close to this necessarily, but maybe Anna has a little bit more information on that.
Yes, through the Chair Anna Quanga with RMA Planning, staff did a lot of research to find out if there was a, such a system that we could kind of model after and we were not able to locate anything like that. The closest thing that Monterey County had was a subdivision evaluation for subdivisions in Carmel Valley. That was with the previous plan, that was Carmel Valley Master Plan that was adopted in nineteen eighty-two. However, that evaluation criteria was, was simply going through policy and policy consistency, whereas the Development Evaluation System is, is meant to and intended to go beyond just being consistent with the policy. And if I may address Supervisor Phillips's concern, ag farm worker housing is one of the housing or one of the developments that we have devised to be, or that would qualify for an exemption of the Development Evaluation System. So we, we did take great care and look at the entire agricultural element in the general plan and knowing that it's a very important part of our economic stability in Monterey County. And we've included ag, ag employee housing as well as certain subdivisions and, and things that support the, the conservation and the, the agricultural viability of the property.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add, sorry again, this is Brandon Swanson, the RMA. You know, just thinking through the conversation also that was speaking a little bit about some of the commercial issues. One possibility, if the board was interested, you know, there is thirty, as I mentioned, thirty points for affordable housing was such an important part of this from the work groups. But if there are one of those small areas of the county that's all commercial, if there were to be a fully commercial project that had no housing components to it, perhaps one solution would be to essentially not apply those thirty points, not apply that affordable housing section to that commercial project. So then they're scored on a seventy point. So right now, the DES is made up of a hundred points. It just happened that that's the way it was. Seventy percent is passing. So you could theoretically, we could do a minor amendment to the ordinance. We'd obviously have to come back with that. But, you know, minor amendment to say, you know, seventy percent of those seventy points would be passing for commercial projects. You just take the affordable housing, the housing component out of the DES for an all-commercial project. That may be one way to accommodate commercial development while still running it through the DES and not, not applying the housing side of that project or the, of the system.
Well, I thank you for, for your answers. And I think it's incumbent upon the board to be thoughtful about this considering that, that we're basically making clear that we're the only county that would have this kind of evaluation system anywhere in California out of the fifty-eight counties. And it's important to get it right. And I know this was devised in the last general plan. I was, was conditioned into the general plan, but a lot has changed since the last, the last time around. Priorities at the legislative level have changed significantly in terms of housing and our homelessness crisis. There's big fights in Sacramento now because of zoning and, and legislation that is trying to streamline affordable housing or housing in general in California. And, and I think we just got to be, I, I think the goal is, is, is right in terms of trying to encourage smart growth and I, and I believe strongly in that. But at the same time, we are so far behind in California in terms of, of the housing needs in a growing state that, that it has, it cautions us to not, to get it right for some of all, but then also to not put additional impediments. Housing already in Monterey County takes years in the planning. We got projects along the one-on-one corridor in Salinas, Gonzalez, and Soladad, a moving in the pipeline, but they've been in the pipeline for years now. And we haven't seen groundbreaking. And so it shows that we have some potential sites for housing, but even then, it takes such a long time. In the meantime, our communities, our families, our workforce suffer from high rents and inability to even afford to buy a place or, or see more rental apartments being developed for the needs of our local communities. So just saying, it just, I agree that it's important to look at this, look how it's going to work for a wide range of projects and make sure we, we get, we get it right. Otherwise, they, instead of being a tool, it becomes an additional, it could be an additional barrier in litigation to stop projects from moving forward, projects that perhaps we, we do need and need to evaluate on an individual basis. But that, but I think we all recognize there's a tremendous need in this particular county, much, much more throughout the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We're going to go to Supervisor Jane Parker next. Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to say that I, you know, this has been a long time coming. And I really appreciate the fact that staff has been working with the, all the stakeholders and, you know, trying to come up with something. You know, I just want to point out for people who weren't here on the, on the dais during the, the general plan discussions and adoption, that part of what we did in the general plan was we prioritized areas for development where there is infrastructure, it's closer to schools, it's, and, and services and so on. And this Development Evaluation System is for development that might be proposed outside of those areas. And probably one of the reasons that other counties in California don't have this kind of, you know, evaluation system is because they don't allow growth and development outside of their, say, their community areas or their priority areas. So I think we're, we're really trying to have something that if there is a great need or if there is a, a good project that we would consider having it happen outside of the community areas or the, the rural centers. I, and I think it's, it's important that we have the criteria, not create incentives to do the kind of development that is economically unsustainable for, for the county. So I think, you know, I think we're, it's taken a long time to get here. I would just say it's, you know, it's not perfect. I have some issues I might point out, but I, I think the staff's been working on this for a long time. They put something together that actually could work, I think, pretty well. And at the very least, we can, we can try it and, and see how it works. And if it, if it works, great. And if there are some changes that might be needed, we can review that down the road. But I just want to say thank you to the staff. It's been one of those thankless tasks. So many of the policies in the general plan essentially left a lot that was vague. And we have, the board left it to staff to come up with implementing ordinances to actually achieve the policy direction. And that is, that's sort of, you know, cart and horse backwards. So it, it has taken a long time and I think we've got something here that's workable. And we can go forward today. And I would be a little cautious about delaying it anymore, but also trying to weaken this in any way because... in any way because we're getting to the point where we might be under, you know, some risk of liability that we're not actually getting our policies in place in a timely manner. So, or we might have to go back and do environmental review. So I'm just not, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, and so I really appreciate the work that staff has put in so far.
Thank you Supervisor. We're going to go to Supervisor Adams next. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we, as the Board of Supervisors, had the workshop on May fifth of this year, we reviewed the planning.
Supervisor Adams, I hate to cut you off, but do you have another microphone attached or something? Is your microphone covered? It's kind of hard to hear. You've got a bit of an echo going.
Geez, I know that there have been issues with IT today. Can you hear me now clearly?
A little better, yeah. I think the closer you are to the screen, the better.
Oh dear, it's going to be, you know, very big. Is it putting now?
There you go.
Hello? Okay, I'm going to, I will try to speak a bit more loudly. Does that help?
A little bit, yes.
Oh my God, I don't know what the problem is here. But anyway, I'm so sorry because my words are so clear in my brain. So actually, what I was saying is that when we, as a board, renewed this at the workshop we had on May fifth, that we made several suggestions to the staff, which they have incorporated into the new, the final document that we're looking at. And as soon as we wanted to acknowledge a great job they did, we talked about one of the things that was a concern is that the ordinance needed to clarify that a failing score and staff recommendation for denial did not circumvent a discretionary process afforded to the applicant. And at a word, a failing score is not an automatic denial. So that change was made. Secondly, there was another request. We have an executive summary that would be something easy for people to understand, explain what the process is and how to go through it. In my opinion, the staff produced a beautiful brochure that's easy to understand and that tells anyone who has any potential applicant, just lets them know what the process is and how to be able to do it. In fact, I think that this DES makes it easier for people who want to do a development because it lets them know early on in the process what they need to do to be able to complete and to get approval for, rather than going down the path only to find themselves meeting with a great community or legal disagreement. I think what we have before us is a culmination of many, many, many years by many people. And I want to thank both the staff and the members of the public who contributed in a very positive way to put together this complete package on how to evaluate major subdivisions that get proposed outside of the priority growth areas for the county. The DES presents, that represents the core concern about where growth should go that has been debated now for two decades. I don't think that's rushing into anything. I don't feel that it's, that we should reopen the debate based on some of the comments that Supervisor Parker made. We do need to move the implementation tasks that are still waiting to be done from other things that the general plan has put forward that have not been completed. If we can take this box, it frees staff to be able to perform on other elements of the general plan that need to be done. The thing that concerns me the most, however, is that not having moved forward with implementation of the general plan was one of the most concerning areas identified in the City Gate Report. If we don't do this today, I fear that we will fail in the effort we just committed to with improving RMA through City Gate's recommendations. I don't think that the board can afford to continue to debate the DES any longer. Staff has done an excellent job. Staff has invested some of them, a great portion of their careers here with the county in perfecting this DES. I think it may not be perfect, but given that it was supposed to have been completed many years ago, I am in support of approving the package that's reserved for us today and very thankful that the staff has done the excellent work that they have. And it was the board of supervisors who sat in on chairs before us. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Adams. We got most of that, yeah. I think, I don't know if you have headphones plugged in or something, it just, it sounds really odd, like, almost like you're speaking from across the room.
Hard to hear, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little better, but unfortunately, it looks a little funny when you pull the screen in, but we can hear you better when it happens. So for my comment, you know, what, the piece that was missing for me, and I think would really be helpful, is to get a list of maybe the last forty big projects that came across this board to understand how they would have been scored. Because what I don't want it to be is just an additional layer. I know that when you actually go to challenge a ruling by the planning commission, you start to layer these different costs after, time after time. And what we want to do is create a system that meets the demands of the general plan and the decisions and sort of what this board has supported in the past to help us move forward. For me, I look at, you know, we're talking about the inland zoning, the non-coastal, and I think about my communities where right now I have major challenges for developments that we want to support. I look at Chular, the sewer system isn't holding up to what it needs to be. I look at San Lucas, the water, you know, the water quality isn't there, and we're still working to clean up the water there. And when I think about where we're trying to focus housing right now and where we need it, because for me, it's still the COVID impact. It's my families that are living too many families to a home that are encouraging the spread of COVID. I don't want to add one more layer in between, but what I would like to see is maybe the last forty or fifty projects that came through this board that we ended up either supporting or not supporting, but seeing how they would have ranked. What would it have done? Where would they have ended up? So that we have a good grasp on, is the system working to the issues that we're considering as we're making decisions? So that's a question I do ask for staff in terms of, you know, I see Brandon Swanson through his hand up, so I'm hoping that there's a response there. Mr. Swanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Brandon Swanson with RMA. So I hear the request for some maybe background on how previous projects would have scored. I think it's important just to note from Ms. Kanga's presentation that since the general plan was implemented, there have only been eleven projects that would have even been subject to the DES, four of which have been approved, the rest have either been withdrawn or incomplete or denied. So in total, in ten years, essentially, there have only been eleven projects that would have been subject to the DES in all of Monterey County.
And the ones that were gone, the ones that would have gone through, have those been ranked?
No, we did not run the previous projects that were approved through the DES. I don't know, Ms. Trimling may want to speak to that a little bit. We were advised by council, probably wouldn't be the best idea to do that.
Good afternoon Supervisors. Well, actually, since two thousand and ten, to the extent we've had any projects that were deep, where the applications were, they were for subdivisions and they were deemed complete after the date stated in the general plan, those we did analyze them in terms of the criteria that are in the general plan for the DES. But there have been very few of those projects. The other couple of subdivisions, for example, Farini Ranch that you considered was actually under the nineteen eighty-two general plan because that application had been deemed complete prior to the time where the general plan regulations kick in. And also, I think I've been doing land use for the county for like fifteen years, and I don't think we've had forty or fifty projects that would have been subject, that were large enough to actually have been subject to the DES because all minor subdivisions are not included in the DES. So it would have had to be a major subdivision or five units or five lots created or more, and also, or an equivalently large single development that didn't involve a subdivision. So there haven't been all that many. It's up to you, obviously, if the board wants to give direction to staff to do some more additional analysis. I'll also point out, as I believe staff stated, the DES has three exemptions, and those exemptions are for subdivisions that are exclusively for agricultural purposes. There's also an exception for long-term affordable housing exclusively for agricultural employees, and then also an exemption for long-term affordable housing, oh, I don't know, for exemption for developments within the ag winery corridor plan area. So, and there's some very specific criteria, but those are all exempt from the development evaluation system. And then the last point I'll make is that, you know, this doesn't apply in any community area or rural center or affordable housing overlay district. So for example, Chular is a community plan area.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is we're saying we need to focus the growth there, but they're not in a condition where they can take growth right now because of the situations that they're in, and that's been a challenge to folks who've come looking at those communities to develop there, and there's no water source, and so they can't develop per chief of San Lucas, or the sewer capacity isn't there, and that's a condition in Chular. And so we're telling folks, go here, yeah, oh, never mind, the system's not ready to handle you. Get back and wait in line, we'll let you know when the system's ready. And so that, again, is impacting the housing situation in the Salinas Valley where this will primarily be what's in play. I see Supervisor Phillips has his hand up, so I'm going to go to Supervisor Phillips next.
Yeah, I continue to share your concern. I mean, the rural centers, Bradley, San Lucas, where's Plato? P-L-E-Y-T-O? I haven't heard of that.
That's down in the San Antonio Valley, and it's actually underwater. It's now New Plato that we're talking about because the original Plato is at the base or at the bottom of Lake San Antonio.
Right. Well, I just don't want to see this end up being a hurdle and being able to use as a hurdle for necessary development. And we got to be cautious, especially with housing, with how the state has put on such a full-court press on housing that we have to make sure that we don't put any hurdles up to housing and violate the state mandates, so.
Okay, so at this point, what's the will of the board? For me, I'd love more information, but.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we support staff's recommendation. I think, you know, listening to this discussion, I appreciate that there are concerns about sewer or water capacity in some of the rural centers or community areas, but there's not going to be better sewer capacity or water quality outside of community areas or rural centers. I mean, the whole point is that within cities and community areas, there's a greater likelihood that we will have the infrastructure and the services that are needed. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we support staff's recommendation.
Okay. I see Supervisor Adams trying to make a comment, but she's muted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and I will second that motion.
I'll make a substitute motion. I'll make a substitute motion that we have staff rework this and bring this back at a future date to the board and do the requested modeling that numerous of my colleagues requested be done. It's too important to not do that thorough vetting and rework it and bring it back to us and for consideration at a future date.
I tend to agree. I'll second that substitute motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion followed by a substitute motion, so we'll follow in the substitute motion first, which is to bring it back at a later date with additional information as requested by the supervisors. And with that, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor LaHo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Nope.
Supervisor Adams?
No.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Yes, so the substitute motion carries. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break. I understand we're going to try to get Supervisor Adams' computer restarted here to get us some clear audio, so we're going to take a five-minute break for a tech break. We'll be right back. Supervisor Adams, are you back with us?
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, can you speak, can you give us a little filibuster?
Oh, please, I think I filibustered enough for today.
All right.
Beautiful.
You're coming through loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm using a different computer.
Perfect.
I don't know what the problem is with the other one. I'm ready to go.
Okay, we're going to give it just another minute since we did say it was a five-minute break. Okay, we're going to go ahead and make sure we're recording again. Welcome back. Thank you for bearing with us through that break. What I want to do right now is take up item 28 that we had on consent earlier and take it over to council for a recommendation.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the board. We have conferred over the break, and our recommendation at this point is to continue this item for one week. We'll come back next week, having looked at the complicated history and some of the local issues associated with this. We might have additional recommendations at that time, but we're prepared to come back next week and give as much of a report as we can.
So with that, I'll check. Yeah, we do need a motion and a second on that.
Move continuance for a week?
Second.
Of the item.
We have a motion and a second. So we're going to take public comment on it again, just see if there's any comment on that action. Seeing nobody in the room. Do I have anybody via the Zoom? No hands up, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to this board and do a roll call vote.
Supervisor LaHo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Twenty-eight has been continued to next week. Now sixteen. Oops, sorry, got out of order there. We're going to move on to item sixteen, which is to receive a report from the C A O's office on the COVID-19 pandemic disparate impact report, including strategies for addressing the disparate impact of COVID-19 pandemic on communities of color in Monterey County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The COVID-19 pandemic has obviously been something that has created quite an impact across the county, across the nation, across the world. And as you look at it for Monterey County, for California, for the United States, there are various lenses upon which we can, you know, look at the impact itself. There's obviously the immediate impact on people, the immediate response that you have to COVID in your community, in your neighborhood, in your family, and how to handle it. And the kind of, that's kind of the direct impact issues that people might be familiar with. But as Supervisor Leho, I think, originally communicated out is that there might be some broader issues associated with the pandemic and looking at it from more of a disparate impact, more of a broader impact potential here. And is it disproportionately impacting communities of color? And I know that there have been some studies, some research done across the country and across California to show some of that impact and disparate impact on communities of color. That may also be prevalent here in Monterey County. And so we thought it was important, we took the cue from the board about what, you know, what we should be doing here and what we should be looking at. And we know that there are a lot of issues associated with different healthcare matters, different pieces of access to medical care and health care that you might say, oh, it's just a matter of, you know, do you have the ability to see a healthcare professional? And some might think that that's the end of the question, but it's a lot broader than that. And as we started to look at the issue, we found out that there are a lot of systemic issues. You know, you look at, income might be one of the biggest, you know, what is the income of people who are subject to it? But there's a lot more. There's housing, there's nutrition, there's environment, there's justice, there's social justice, there are legislative components. And it obviously crosses so much, so many different boundaries of life that it might take quite a broad spectrum of talents to come and address it. And that's why we brought together as many talented people in the county and the county workforce to try to look at some of the pieces of this. And the, you know, the most importantly, I think, is making sure that you have somebody who's driving and that you have a champion. And so, you know, when I was first looking at the issue, you know, I was kind of tasked with looking at it. I noticed that we needed, I noted that we needed somebody who can focus on it and can bring the energy and perspective to finding, you know, finding the problem, identifying the problem, and also potentially identifying some solutions. And so that's where I asked Rosemary Soto to step up and take the lead in addressing the challenges that we have here. I think many people know Rosemary both from her work with the Census, obviously, and also with different aspects of, you know, governing for racial equity and some of the social justice issues, some of the crime impact issues here in Monterey County. And so I thought it was, she would be the perfect one to lead this effort. And she'll introduce the subject a little more in depth and also introduce the team that we've been meeting with regularly to try to address this issue and try to, and to get from the board some direction about how we might proceed to addressing the disparate impact of the pandemic on communities of color here in Monterey County. And we think it might lend itself to some broader changes in Monterey County and not just for COVID-19. So I'll turn it over to Rosemary and let her take the show.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I want to first just do a sound check, make sure that I'm being heard. It's always a little difficult to know if I am once I unmute.
We've got you.
Great, thank you. I want to first acknowledge and commend your board, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. I have consistently heard questions around racial equity when it comes to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think that that has definitely spurred the momentum that we've gained here to identify what are the strategies for addressing the disparities that we are seeing here in Monterey County. And I also want to thank and acknowledge our C A O, our leadership here, Charles McKee, for calling this out and putting some time and resources into demonstrating how can we, into identifying how can we adequately address the issues that we've identified here. And Nick Chulos, who has also has been a strong support and lead in this area as well. We do have an entire team that is going to present to you different aspects of the issues that we have identified. And I just, I do want to start with, for the sake of the public, many may not be aware of why we are identifying race as a common and as a very elite indicator. And one of the things that we know about the governing for racial equity principles is that it is a historic impact that we see. We are working within systems and institutions that, you know, contain and we manage policies and programs and even practices that either perpetuate or contribute to the disparities. And what we see in the pandemic, what has come to light, is nothing more than, you know, the symptoms of greater problems and greater disparities within our systems. And so dismantling what is known as systemic and institutional racism is something that, it is a task that will take quite a lot of time and resources and investment that is for the long haul. And I just want to commend our local leadership here in Monterey County for making that commitment some time ago. And again, that commitment continues to show through in even just putting together a strategy that will address the disparities as a result of the pandemic. Another very important principle of governing for racial equity is that, you know, we acknowledge first the institutional change that needs to happen and the transformation that will address the disparities, as I just explained, but also the use of racial equity tools, which will assess the impact through a racial equity lens. You know, asking those tough questions, why is this happening? Why do we see housing as such an issue that is ongoing? And we struggle to address those issues. So getting to the root cause of why we see these racial disparities and the impact of the pandemic is key. Another very important principle of governing for racial equity is that the acknowledgement and the understanding that when we want to reach racial equity, it will be impossible to achieve racial equity unless we recognize that we have some power imbalances within our communities and within our professional structures. That means, you know, being willing and committed to shifting and sharing decision-making power, which begins with creating space for meaningful and continuous community engagement. And this particular strategy of just bringing together the work that was dedicated to creating this report also includes a very serious and long-term commitment to community engagement. And it's one thing that I particularly feel very proud of. And what I also want to emphasize is that another principle of G R E, governing for racial equity, is that no one is left behind. Achieving racial equity does not mean that you shift resources or you shift the dedication of attention to needs. It simply means that everyone is given the adequate support and resources needed to have the disparities addressed. So with that, I want to go ahead and begin with what will be a report on the findings of COVID-19 morbidity and mortality. And I will introduce Dr. Moreno and Kristi Michie, who will share out the status of where we are and, you know, what we have found as the issues are outlaid.
All right. Thank you, Rosemary. Good afternoon, Chair Supervisors. Ed Moreno, Monterey County Health Officer, Director of Public Health. So early in the pandemic, we had low numbers of cases, hospitalizations, and fatalities. And they were far too few for our epidemiologists to conduct data analysis. Over time, though, we had anecdotal experience suggesting increasing cases among Latino community compared to other groups. And then as the pandemic progressed, our public health eventually received enough reports of cases, hospitalizations, and fatalities to begin to conduct analysis comparing the impact of COVID-19 on different groups. So our analysis now shows with statistical significance that there are, in fact, certain populations that are disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. And statistical significance means that the differences that we see, such as a difference in case rates or hospitalization rates between groups, are real. And the differences are not, are very unlikely to have happened just by chance. So Kristi Michie, who's our Assistant Director of Public Health and one of our most experienced epidemiologists, will now share her analysis of COVID-19 cases, hospitalizations, and fatalities in Monterey County. Kristi?
Good afternoon. So I want to start by just orienting us a little bit to these data tables. So the first column represents the racial or ethnic group of the individuals that we're looking at. The second column is the number of confirmed COVID-19 cases among that racial and ethnic group. The third column is the proportion of total Monterey County cases that that racial or ethnic group represents. And then the next column, proportion of Monterey County population, is the proportion among the entire Monterey County population that that racial or ethnic group represents. The fifth column is the rate of COVID-19 per 100,000 population. And then the last column looks at the potential range of values in which the true rate for that demographic group probably lies. And that's called a 95% confidence interval around that rate. And for the purposes of this report, we would consider one group's rate to be significantly different than another group's rate from a statistical perspective if the rates 95% confidence intervals do not overlap. So when we talk about statistical significance, that's what we're looking at, is whether that interval overlaps. So looking at the data, and the other thing I want to point out is that if we were, if there were no disparities among groups, we would expect the proportion of COVID-19 cases to mirror the proportion of Monterey County population that that group represents. So columns three and four would look the same. So if we look at the proportion of cases compared to the proportion of population, Hispanic and Latinx residents of Monterey County are disproportionately affected by COVID-19. People who consider themselves to be Hispanic or Latinx represent 61% of the population, but make up 93% of our COVID-19 cases. Latino and Hispanic residents also experienced significantly higher rates of COVID-19 than other racial and ethnic groups in Monterey County. Rates of COVID-19 morbidity were also significantly higher among Black and African-American residents compared to white, non-Hispanic residents. While rates among Asian and Pacific Islanders were higher compared to white, non-Hispanic residents, the difference was not statistically significant when looking at this data. Next. So this table looks at severe cases of illness and mortality among those affected by COVID-19 in Monterey County. We see similar disparities here. 85% of hospitalizations and 77% of fatalities occurred among Latino and Hispanic residents who represented only 61% of Monterey County's populations. Unfortunately, or fortunately, if you look at it this way, the rates were not high enough, were not calculated because the numbers were relatively small and could not create statistically significant rates with that data. Next. But now this table looks at testing. Access to testing and other services is an important component of any health-related disparity analysis. These data represent tests completed through July 31st. It should be noted that race and ethnicity information were missing for 25, were missing for most of our results. We only have race and ethnicity data for 27% of those tested. And that's through either collection at the testing sites or through interviews during this timeframe. So we have to look at this data through that lens, that we have a lot of missing information. However, testing rates were significantly higher among Latino individuals than most other race and ethnic groups in Monterey County, with individuals who self-identified as other and multiracial groups being the exception. Testing rates were significantly lower among Asians and Pacific Islanders compared to all other racial and ethnic groups, except for among Black and African-American individuals. Next.
So this is Krista Hammy, the Planning, Evaluation, and Policy Manager. Elsa Heeman is our Director of Health, is unable to make it today. Just there was a scheduling conflict at the last minute. So I will be filling in for both of us instead of just for myself. And so we, now that we understand the disparate impacts of COVID-19 on communities of color, we want to highlight next a comprehensive approach to slow transmission and address health disparities in Monterey County. You'll be hearing first from Health Department and then from other departments. Addressing the underlying social determinants of health are imperative for reducing disparities. And the proposed strategies will be implemented in partnership by Monterey County Departments and community stakeholders. Next. So first with testing. There are many challenges contributing to insufficient testing capacity, including limited supply of kits for hospital-based testing services, limited availability of services in outpatient clinic settings, limited community access points for testing, lack of funding, and lack of comprehensive compliance with California Department of Public Health updated COVID-19 testing guidance. A few proposed short-term strategies in our report include engaging local and state agencies in developing appropriate testing strategies and allocating testing resources to impacted communities, and using case and testing rates to guide efforts to deploying community testing services and collaborating with primary care providers to take a more active role in providing testing services and managing sick patients, as well as an increasing message around testing compliance and guidance. Next. For case investigation and contact tracing, it's important that these For case investigation and contact tracing, it's important that these are both part of a standard public health approach for containment and infectious, infectious diseases. And when used in combination with other public health strategies, they can be effective tools for reducing transmission in impacted communities. So the current challenges with case investigations and contact tracing include a lack of trained and qualified individuals to serve in this capacity and delayed receipt of equipment needed. So a few short-term strategies include recruiting and training more individuals and those representative of the communities impacted. Ensuring training includes topics of cultural sensitivity and humility and collaborating with healthcare partners and community-based organizations to support efforts. And I, I do want to say that we currently have a team of about 100 staff working on the effort. And we'll be working on uh having additional staff moving into those positions to do timely contact for impacted individuals. Next. You'll be hearing more about housing uh when Director Medina speaks. But we also have to point out here some alternate housing access needs as it relates to uh isolation. And adequate isolation is key for preventing virus spread. And housing insecurity can make it nearly impossible to quarantine properly when it's needed. So in addition to continuing the current effort and making temporary housing available to individuals impacted by COVID-19 and those considered higher risk for developing complications, it's also recommended that the county provide emergency rental assistance to keep people impacted with COVID-19 housed. And I'll explore expanding eligibility for isolation spaces for people experiencing other comorbidities like domestic violence in response to presumed increased presumed increases due to the shelter-in-place order and the stressors associated with that. Next. There's also health literacy, and this is uh about all the considerations around trying to message around the pandemic and then also the challenges for messaging as it relates to people's understanding of the health information that is being received and those methods for transmitting it. So going forward, we need to continue building on, you know, sort of the four pillars that you see here, from relationships to guiding development uh for the areas of need. Such as here where you have an example where a city wanted more information on about bounce houses and safety, and we worked with them and got information out to all cities on that. Uh, and then working especially with local liaisons and national celebrities to be message ambassadors. And there's been a variety of PSAs um developed and still to be developed in those areas. A wide variety of, of documents and a resource library, and that's ours and partners and, and working cross-collaboratively across multiple partners uh for all those documents and getting them out to the communities. And then supporting and getting them out to the communities and other outreach methods like hotlines, developing innovative communication practices such as a WhatsApp for text messaging, modeled after one in Ventura County. And then also uh our call center that's been active since uh the outbreak first started, the pandemic first started. And then partnering with other efforts such as those being led by uh Rosemary Soto around census 2020, where we can get jointly information out on COVID-19 protection measures as well as the census information. Next. And then the last area for health that we have is access to care and needs to focus on short-term addressing equity gaps for COVID-19 in this area. For the positive patients is very important. From funding for services like emergency shelter and meal supports and for the general population supports such as disaster relief funds for undocumented residents. It also includes continuing our support for expanding the concepts of access to healthcare for other social determinants of health such as our medical legal partnership and our clinic services. And then in the longer term, it's important that we intentionally shift our messaging to include mental health workers as part of our central workforce because mental health needs are going to last longer than the physical health needs from the pandemic. We also are going to be working with developing partners, plans for equitable access to medications and vaccines and clinical trials and treatments for communities of color where they seek and where they receive care. So now pass it on to Dr. Medina, I think.
Yes, thank you. We will, we welcome Lori Medina, who will share out on public assistance as well as Lawrence Swanson.
Thank you so much um to be able to speak to you today about this really um important issue. And so this, this first chart that we have um presented before you is probably not as up-to-date as what uh Kristi Michi presented to you, but it's, it's very illustrative of um the, a comparison in terms of our county population, the population that the Department of Social Services serves in terms of um public assistance for basic needs. And then a point in time perspective around um at that point, which is probably a couple of months ago, around our COVID-19 population, which is dated compared to what uh Kristi Michi um presented. But what it does um show you, as um Charles McKee pointed out when he first started, about the various lenses. So when you look at our county population compared to our client population that DSS serves and the penetration or the incidence in COVID, what you will see is that our Latino population, although very large in Monterey County, when you look at their penetration in the public assistance uh service delivery realm, that number continues to go up. And then when you look at um how the Latino population has been impacted by COVID, it goes up even more. As opposed to other populations, and there's no value judgment there, but when you look at um white, Asian or Black populations in our community, you see a much larger representation in the general population as opposed to their penetration in accessing services through social services. And then you see a, a smaller population that we have information around who have um been impacted by COVID-19. The next slide. So when we talk about public assistance for basic needs, we have broadly characterized public assistance in five very broad categories. That includes cash assistance programs, that could be your CalWorks and general assistance and um the supplemental security income program through um my department. You also have health insurance access, which could be through Medi-Cal, in-home support services and covered California. Um, we're looking at, you know, food insecurity, which is a big issue for our county. And so that is addressed through, either through my department, through CalFresh, also through WIC, which is a supplemental nutrition program for women, infants and children that's administered through the Health Department. We have nonprofits um for nonprofit delivering food bank services and other nonprofits with other meal delivery programs. We also have employment support um through CalWorks. There are various entities, both within social services and outside of social services that do vocational assessments and job training. And then we can't forget our other partners who um provide services from other nonprofits and through our faith-based partners. Next slide. So we looked at um strategies from a short-term and long-term strategy, and many of those strategies overlap. Um, one of the things that we really um recognized was that the pandemic has shown us that many of our vulnerable populations have difficulty accessing services, either because of real barriers or through fear because of programs that are coming down through the federal administration or changes such as in um the public rule or public charge um rule. Um, and so there's fear about accessing services, particularly for our Latino community, even if those uh people in Latino communities do have citizenship. They may be fearing to expose themselves because maybe some of their family members or part of their households may have mixed statuses. So that is a real issue. So one of the things that we really wanted to do was look at uh how to expand our outreach. Uh, that's something that we see an increased need for, not only through social services, but also, also through our uh nonprofit partners. And so figuring out ways to expand our partnership with our community-based organizations who have more natural access to a, a lot of our constituency base. The other short-term strategy that we're looking at was um that we've learned through this pandemic is that um we're doing a lot more phone interviews for eligibility determination. So where we used to have people lined up in our offices to get access to services, we're doing a lot more telephonically. And we've learned that that is a useful resource and that we can do that. It's just something that we really didn't rely on very much in the past. So that's something that we think would be a very quick win. Another thing that we're looking at is advocating and supporting um the EBT eligibility or electronic benefit transfer card, EBT cards um through more um virtual platforms. So an example of that is um we only have really two major vendors that are national vendors that accept EBT cards for constituents to purchase food and goods with their EBT cards. That's Amazon and Walmart. Well, so what we've recognized is that that's been a very successful program and we need more advocacy at the local and state level to have other vendors accept EBT cards so that our constituents can get things, goods, foods and goods delivered to them. The other thing that we're looking at is um through the pandemic, our state partners um did relax the in-person reassessment requirements for certain benefit programs. So, you know, before the pandemic, um if people wa- needed to um reauthorize their benefits, they had to come in for an in-person interview. Well, now that, that criteria has been relaxed and we think that we need continued advocacy for that because we know that it has worked and that um our constituents have responded very positively to this. And um that should be something that we are looking at in the future about how we do business differently. Job readiness workshops. My CalWorks employment staff have really shifted their service delivery and they're doing a lot of uh online and um telephonic um workshops and um interviews and um services um to facilitate the need since we have not been able to have our offices open as broadly. And that has also been something that we found has been very successful. So we should, I apologize, uh, we should not um discontinue what we know works. Um, and then the other piece is around supporting our community partners in a variety of ways. We know that they struggle to get access to ease. We could really um help um facilitate some of that. The other thing is also helping them with technical assistance about other virtual ways to deliver services. And then even navigating through how we contract with them. Now the county has really embraced DocuSign and facilitating contract management in a different way. And that's something that we believe that we should continue. Next slide. And then in terms of our long-term needs, um it, it, it really mirrors a lot of the short-term needs, except that um some of the things that we have found in these short-term strategies is that we really have the ability to make some policy changes about how we do business. And so we need advocacy um with the state to make those short-term strategies more long-term, including remote accessibility. One of the most exciting things that we found um i- in this pandemic is my eligibility staff who traditionally had to be in the office. They um have a electronic platform that they could only access through the office. Well, now we have found a way with some technology changes to allow a, a lot of our staff in the eligibility re- realm to also work remotely to get access to their system of record so that they can complete the transactions that they need. But it also makes it more amenable for our client population to be able to access. We already had platforms like See For Yourself, but to be able to do interviews without having to come into the office so that, you know, our community and our workforce can be safe, that is something that we should really capitalize on. So outreach strategies are something that we really want to focus on. Utilizing social media more so that uh our, our constituency base knows that those services are available in a more virtual way is something that we need some advocacy for. And then post-pandemic crisis, um we should really be looking to our state and federal partners to allow for the continuance of some of these more virtual ways to transact business so that people don't have to stand and deliver or put in a, a, a physical appearance. Yes, we do have to have some verification methods, but we've already found that we can do this in other ways that will help facilitate business, that will help save time, it will help save resources. And so we really feel that that is something that um we need to be um pursuing. Again, I talked about the EBT card acceptance. We need a much broader um commerce around accepting uh EBT cards for our client population so that they can get um the, the services or the food goods that they need delivered to their homes. Um, online job readiness uh is something that's really important. Now we have Zoom technology and other ways to do workshops that can really reach a broader constituency than we have before just doing one-to-one interviews or a classroom workshop. And then um access to Wi-Fi. One of the things that we learned from the school district during the pandemic was they found very creative ways to set up substations in community areas where if people didn't have their own internet access in their homes, maybe there's community hubs where they could get access to Wi-Fi. We need to really expand our ability to help our constituents who don't have that technology in their home so that they can easily access, uh, access it. And then um, you know, the, as I talked about before with our contractors and how we uh create accountability in a way that we don't have to send envelopes that takes a month to process something to, to get contracts executed. That's something that we really think um needs to be uh more of a long-term strategy process and policy. And so with that, um I will turn it back to Rosemary.
Thank you, Lori. Now we will hear about housing strategies to address the disparities in access to housing and the availability of housing. And Brandon Swanson with the Resource Management Agency will take us through that.
Thanks, Rosemary, and, and thanks to the board for having us all here today to talk about this important item. So as Rosemary said, my name is Brandon Swanson with the Resource Management Agency. And I'm going to focus really just on these three slides, uh more the physicality of site selection for housing and the process of building housing projects. And then a little bit later, uh, we'll hear more about the actual, you know, homelessness and, and housing issues. So as uh Krista Hanny mentioned earlier, in a pandemic or in any sort of situation, it's important to have a safe place to, to put your head into shelter in place. So if we're going to get there where there's more of these opportunities for people to have places to live safely and, and securely, there's going to have to be development of actual housing. And so there's, there's some considerations and some barriers that I want to discuss and then some potential solutions. Uh, the first couple of slides here, uh, talking about site selection. There's two major considerations when you, when you talk about site selection for developing a housing project. The first one is available services or resources. The second one is permitting requirements or zoning. So this site, this slide really talks about um needing to consider the proximity to services. That means things like shopping, uh recre- That means things like shopping, recreation, et cetera. With the county being so rural, these are real considerations here. This also means access to transportation as well because there's only so many transportation hubs around here. When I talk about resources, I mean things like, of course, water. We all know about water being an issue in Monterey County. It gets a lot of attention and it's very important. But specifically with developing large housing projects, both farmworker or otherwise, one of the sort of silent killers of these projects is wastewater. It's a key factor. Many parts of the county are not on sewer systems. And so these projects that are larger, it'll have to rely on septic, which can be really expensive to develop a large package treatment plant or really hard to find enough space to put a septic field on it that will accept a load from a larger project. So that's one of the major barriers that entry on top of the water that doesn't get talked about a lot is wastewater. So those systems are subject to floods, all kinds of potential issues. One possible solution for making that barrier to entry maybe easier would be some sort of funding either at the county level or even talking legislatively to get some funding for a regional system or at least developing and exploring what a regional wastewater system would look like in some of these areas to help incentivize or at least break down these barriers to developing large housing projects. Because ultimately, I've seen it many times and some of you on board have been involved in projects as well where we've seen this wastewater issue come up over and over again. So this talks about site selection. These are some of the constraints, resources that we need to consider. Next slide, please. So the next part of site selection is thinking about, okay, you've considered the resources. You've considered the constraints. Now you need to think about the actual, the permits that you're going to need to receive. And, you know, as much as I don't like to say it, permits can be a barrier to entry as well. And so one thing that we need to consider is that Monterey County and rest of California mostly has a complex set of codes and regulations that have different requirements for different areas of the county. This can create the barrier in the sense that there's confusion early on and maybe not knowing where you can and can't go with certain types of projects. So one solution here, we've actually done this. So what you have up on your screen here is a map that we've actually made. And I've tried to break it down so it's easy to digest. Big maps are hard to do in these contexts, but you'll see the slide in the background there called out in the top left. And the key has been expanded here if you're able to see. But what this map is, and we have, we've made four of these, are areas of the county where ag housing opportunities can be taken advantage of, where you can build farmworker housing and ag housing. And it's called out by color on the zoning and then listed the types of permits and processes you may have to go through in order to get this. So for example, you know, in the farmland zoning district, if you read, you can read that. It says ag employee housing of not more than 36 beds in a group quarters or 12 units for use by a single family or household. And this is a map that shows where you can get these types of things without any additional planning permits. So maps like this could be used to share with developers, people that want to build projects, to show them target areas where they may want to come in and sort of focus their efforts on building these projects, knowing that there may be a more streamlined and simpler permit. Is a potential solution if we build more maps for target areas for development to get someone information upfront to make informed decisions and try to smooth out the process a little bit in a really complex regulatory system. Next slide, please. So once you've figured out your resource constraints and where you want to place your project and you've determined what your permits are going to look like, if any, then the last sort of barrier or hurdle to building housing around here is the process in and of itself. As we all know, the process for land use permits takes a lot of time. Housing projects are no different. Those require land use permits as well. This means time and money, which is, as I said, a barrier to entry. On the time perspective, applications and review of all these complex land use regulations takes time. There's other parts of the process as well. We got CEQA here, California Environmental Quality Act, which is a long process. Of course, in Monterey County and other parts of the state, appeals are a hot thing. Projects get appealed regularly and then litigation. And that, all of that adds up to multiple years of time. That also equates to cost for the development. California in general is expensive to build in. Then you throw on top all the additional fees, permit fees, impact fees, school fees, technical reports that are required when you have a project that elevates to CEQA. So when you're doing an initial study or an EIR, there's a lot of technical reports that are not cheap, $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 a piece to do these reports. So the cost of initial study MND on EIR is expensive. It adds that layer. And then, of course, the legal costs when I talked about appeals and litigation as well. So I know that our legislative group will get into this a little bit later, but there are some solutions possibly out there talking about state or local regulatory changes that could maybe move some of these barriers, like some of the fees. Or even at the state level, talking about CEQA. If certain levels, more levels of affordable housing or ag worker housing projects could be statutorily or categorically exempt from environmental review, you would cut out some of those layers of time and cost, not having to do the technical reports, dealing with the time it takes to do CEQA and put out environmental documents and have challenges. So there are some regulatory things that could be done either locally or at the state level, which may reduce some of this process barrier to building housing, which is ultimately what we want to see so that people, you know, tying back to Krista's presentation, having a place where people can go in times of pandemic or emergency where they can safely lay their head, they can be sheltered in place, they can be quarantined, especially these communities that are desperately impacted. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Rosemary.
Thank you, Brandon. And now we will hear from Bureau Chief John Ramirez from Environmental Health, who will share out on strategies that his bureau would be able to implement.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. John Ramirez, Director, Environmental Health. I just want to touch base on some of the existing regulatory aspects that environmental health is involved in. And a lot of it kind of follows the information that Brandon Swanson just commented on about housing and the availability of housing and where that housing can be provided for agricultural workers. First of all, I just want to give a brief description and clarification because there's a lot of confusion regarding H2A housing, employee housing and what is available for agricultural workers in Monterey County. Just a brief overview. The Environment Health Bureau is responsible for enforcing and implementing the employee housing program under the Housing and Community Development under the state of California. And that housing encompasses three really separate categories of housing for agricultural workers. The first one is employee housing, which is the H2A housing. And that's that federal program that allows agricultural businesses to bring workers on a temporary basis, seasonal basis, to harvest and work on their crops and their fields. The second is category is employee housing that includes the former labor camps that used to be in Monterey County. And those are labor camps that were regulated in the Housing and Community Development. And under, as Monterey County is the local enforcement agency under Housing and Community Development, we regulate those employee housing facilities. And those employee housing facilities can also include employee housing for workers that are operating inside resorts, such as in Big Sur where there's hotels that have employees living in those quarters there. So we regulate employee housing in those categories. And there's additional category that agriculture is working in Monterey County. And sometimes it's not really noticed or are kind of lost in the mix when you're talking about employee housing. But it's landlord-tenant housing. We deal with landlord-tenant housing as far as agricultural workers living in apartments, homes, or they own their own homes, yet they do work in agricultural settings. But we deal with landlord-tenant issues to make sure that the tenants, the agricultural workers have a right to safe living conditions and safe housing conditions where they're employed at, I mean, where they're housed. One of the major things that we're looking at right now is the number of employee housing. I'll kind of give you a breakdown what we have. We have 43 employee housing sites in Monterey County encompassing those categories I just mentioned with about 2,700 employees comprised of agricultural workers in H2A facilities. There's 14 H2A facilities. The farmer worker housing that I mentioned comprised of single-family dwellings, apartments, dormitories, mobile home parks or employee housing such as resorts that I mentioned. So those 43 sites are spread among those categories I just mentioned. The Environment Health Bureau conducts annual site mandated inspections of these facilities and provides immediate response to health and safety complaints from the tenants to ensure that they have safe drinking water, adequate and safe wastewater disposal and that safe housing standards are met. So one of the things we're also working in is the, we have in place in environmental health to help assure, to help be concerned about the COVID-19 and what we can do with agricultural workers to help prevent this bit of COVID. Since 2006, we have an agricultural field toilet program. We're one, if not the only county in the state of California that provides safe sanitary inspection process for field toilets. And it's important regarding COVID because everybody is concerned about washing your hands and access to clean water to wash your hands and soap and paper towels and clean bathroom facilities when you're in the workforce. So we have an inspection process that ensures that those are available to all the agricultural workers in the agricultural setting. We're also providing education and outreach to ensure that those agricultural field toilets are provided for those workers. And we coordinate with the growers, shippers, the Farm Bureau and the Agricultural Commissioner's Office in working towards providing safe guidelines for employees in the agricultural setting and in the housing for H2A or employee housing settings that they live in. We also are concerned with providing safe food to these workers in the employee housing settings. While a lot of employee housing provides food, some employee housing does not provide food for agricultural workers. But in instances where food is provided, we ensure that the food is provided from safe, reliable sources, prepared in safe manners and also that the food is kept safe while it's, before it's being served and that all precautions are made that workers are provided the same level of safety for food as anybody else would. Kind of what we're striving for in production, providing food to these housing units is that the suppliers of food strive to provide the highest level of food safety. And we promote the Gold Seal Program, which you might see at some of the restaurants. So also try to strive for those high level of standards that they have for agricultural workers receiving food. And I think the only other bit of information I want to provide today is that we continue to strive and work diligently to work with H2A facilities and employee housing facilities and respond to complaints from the workers themselves regarding any situation that they may see. Under the H2A requirements and employee housing requirements, we are only responsible for inspecting and enforcing employee housing regulations in the unincorporated county. Any employee housing within the city limits of any of the cities in Monterey County is under direct responsibility of the state housing and community development. So there is a separation of regulatory response. Yet Environmental Health Bureau does respond within cities to any of these housing options based on health and safety response. So if they have concerns about unsanitary conditions of water, food, or anything, then the government health still responds in those, under those conditions. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, John. And now we'll hear about housing and housing instability from Lauren Suwazapan in Anastasia Wyatt's absence. So thank you, Lauren.
Anastasia Wyatt Housing Program Manager apologizes for not being able to be here, but the Department of Social Services works very closely with her programs. And I'm happy to be here today to cover homelessness and housing instability portion. And here we're recapping the total point in time homeless census numbers. It's significant to note that following the recession in 2007, the numbers of homelessness increased by over 1,000 and homeless populations have never really returned to those pre-recession figures since that time. Next slide. Here we're just doing a quick refresher in understanding the various definitions of homelessness. Category one being the most strict definitions and utilized by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and therefore also the biennial homeless census is what we refer to as literally homeless, sometimes called street homeless or those who are residing in shelters. Next slide. Category two is covering the homeless prevention and those who are at imminent risk of losing housing. This category is often excluded from various HUD, federal or state-funded service programs. But these are families or individuals who are lacking the resources to obtain another form of housing. Next slide. Category three is often used by school districts and includes the definitions from the McKinney-Vinto Act. They have heard that terminology. This is including situations that can often be referred to as crowded housing or couch surfing. Also includes the unaccompanied youth category. Next slide. And category four is very specific homelessness results from domestic violence. Next slide. Here again, calling out the results from the 2019 homeless census. Here you can see it was found a very large majority, 76% of the homeless population are unsheltered. Next slide. A major factor with consideration of COVID is how the unsheltered homeless struggle to follow the shelter-in-place policies without critical access to food, water, toilet facilities, showers, laundries, as well as a place to warm themselves, access internet or charge electronic devices, which could include electronic medical devices, powered wheelchairs. COVID increases the difficulty of homelessness and can intensify, you know, stress levels, isolation that could exacerbate mental illness and physical health conditions. Next slide. Diving a little bit more into the homeless population by race, you can see levels of disproportionality across our county's population to our homeless population. And that disparity has just increased over the years from 2017, which we saw again last year in the 2019 census, particularly within the black or African-American. Next slide. And then here looking at populations by Hispanic or Latinx origin. The next slide. Some of the strategies for addressing those experiencing homelessness during COVID, number one really being utilization of non-congregate shelter options. Also providing sanitation stations that are accessible to homeless encampments, continuing partnerships with the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers and their network and focusing on building supportive housing to reach a functional zero in homelessness. Next slide. Diving more into racial and ethnic composition in Monterey County. Wanted to call it here, 49% of our racial, ethnic composition in our area is the Hispanic population. And then looking at by regions, that percentage is even, is even higher when we drill down into the various communities. Thinking of that high percentage of the minority residents in our community, considering this link between minority resident concentrations and housing disparity. So a concentration being defined as a block group where proportions of minority households is greater than our county's average. So as an example, we find large portions of minority residents work in hospitality industry jobs throughout the Monterey Peninsula area, but face significant affordability barriers to reside near this work. So some strategies in assisting specific with minority concentration areas, really wanting to ensure that we're considering increases in housing stock, but also ensuring adequate affordability that accommodates larger families in these concentration areas and inclusionary housing policies to meet deeper affordabilities in areas where people work. In considering the composition of family households in Monterey County, according to last census data, 72% of Monterey County households are family households. And we see this percentage in similar proportions in areas Salinas. in areas Salinas and Seaside, but significantly lower concentrations in areas like Monterey. So, looking at, you know, 70-something percentage to 49% in Monterey. Families also report additional challenges in securing housing, issues like potential property damages or locating housing that's large enough to accommodate families. Looking at some of that census data, we find Hispanic households average 4.3 persons per household versus 2.7 persons per household in white households. So, high concentrations of Hispanic households are disproportionately impacted by overcrowding, given the larger average household size. Some strategies for family households is providing some tenant landlord housing mediation services for families. And currently, we do provide this through contracts with Echo Housing, additionally increasing affordable housing stock, and again, ensuring that deeper affordability through the inclusionary housing. The other factor here is the housing cost burden. Our income households are affected by a housing cost burden, meaning that they're paying at least 50% of their income toward their housing. And in some cities and incorporated areas of our county, we're finding that some households are experiencing severe cost burdens, where they're paying, you know, upwards of 50% of their income on their housing costs. When you consider the impacts of COVID-19 on our economy, this burden is just, becomes even heavier. So, some of the strategies in addressing that housing cost burden, on the short term, really again, focusing on that homeless prevention and preventing additional people from even entering homelessness in the first place, and offering a wide variety of housing solution options. In the long term, this is building affordable housing, expanding other housing opportunities such as home shared programs. And with that, I'll turn it back to Rosemary.
Thank you, Lauren. And next, we will hear from Darby Marshall, who was also reporting on behalf of Anastasia Wyatt. Darby Marshall, are you with us? We will go ahead and come back to Darby, and next we'll hear from-
Am I still muted? There we go.
Oh, great.
Hi, okay. Economic development in the time of COVID. So, just a few things to keep in mind. In the first seven months of this year, compared to the same, average of the same seven months over the prior five years, Monterey County has lost almost 23,000 jobs. Our unemployment rate is 2/3rds higher in these first seven months of 2020 than it has been over the last five years. Farm employment is down almost 27%. There are almost 14,000 fewer jobs in agricultural farm work, not value-added processing. Leisure and hospitality, another major driver in the local economy, is off 14% in its employment. I want to highlight those because those, while I don't have, you know, breakdowns between whether those are hotel general managers and room staff or the frontline staff, we can assume that vast majority are. And those are going to be our lower-income, more vulnerable population. There are a couple of bright spots. One is mining, logging, and construction, which all had a very small increase in employment. And one of the responses that the counties had is its Small Business Revolving Loan Fund. Since April, we have funded 18 loans totaling little over $400,000. And the county's investment has helped retain 71 and 1/2 jobs. So, with that, move on to the slide. 21% of the households are in the extremely low and low-income categories, or making less than 50% of the area median income. 17% are in the moderate income area. 62% of are within the middle and upper income categories. Proportions to households by income category were similar to the county's whole. These slides pay homage to the county's designation as an urban county for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant Program. And in that program, we have some extra funding that is available and targeted to helping low and moderate income persons, either with economic opportunities, community development opportunities, public services targeted at those low and extremely low populations. Next slide, please. Monterey County's families are faced with threats to their quality of life. When you're looking at 23,000 jobs being lost, we're not only seeing shrinking wages, but disappearing wages, which is going to be a long-term burden as these folks have to dig out from missed rent payments or lacking savings as they encounter increased medical bills. So, these are going to be long-term impacts. The county's response, we are in the middle of preparing our comprehensive economic development strategy, which will help us qualify for additional federal grants to help recover from not only COVID, but possibly even help us transition our economy to take advantage of technological changes. Next slide, please. So, we're working with, we have inclusive workforce development and entrepreneurial programs that we are working with a number of other nonprofits in the Salinas area and the Salinas Valley. We have partnered with the City of Salinas and El Paharo CDC to establish a micro loan revolving loan fund. The Small Business Loan Program that I mentioned earlier that the county has managed for 40 years has made those 18 loans to small businesses, mostly in the Salinas Valley, actually. And we're trying to keep those businesses afloat. We just recapitalized it with another million six from the federal government. And hopefully, we'll be able to reach out to some of the affected businesses. We also are going to be trying to tie that in to help some of the businesses that suffer the double whammy of COVID-19 and the fires. We're also working on getting frontline workers classified as essential so that they can get access to any county or state-level free childcare benefits that may materialize. Next slide, please. And I will turn it back to Rosemary.
Thank you, Darby. Another population that we saw was impacted by the pandemic were those involved in the justice system. And the justice partners have worked together. So, I will turn this over to Mari Sol Mendez with the District Attorney's Office, who will share out on the strategies to address those disparities within this.
Thank you, Rosemary, and good afternoon, all. Our goals here, both short-term and long-term, is to ensure public safety, ensure health protections for inmate workforce populations, and of course, as always, to ensure constitutional rights of both defendants and victims. To that end, what we have done is maintain an active and consistent collaboration with our justice partners, which includes the public defender, Superior Court, Defense Bar, our law enforcement agencies. And we have collaborated together to consider health factors related to COVID-19, all while ensuring public safety in each and every individual case that comes across either the bench or our offices. So, how is this being accomplished? Well, one part of accomplishing this goal is to ensure our ability to administer justice. And in order to do that, the bench has been very accommodating in allowing remote appearances by both the public defenders, the DA's, and the private defense bar. The attorneys have recognized this allowance, has made an extra effort to be efficient and cognizant of the issues that could arise by remote appearances. And so, we have tried together to avoid any stumbling blocks that could get in the way of making sure that justice is achieved. A huge goal during this pandemic is reducing the inmate population. So, Monterey County issued its own temporary bail schedule, modeled after that of the chief justices, which expired in June. Monterey County instituted their own bail schedule in July. And simplistically, that means that most nonviolent crimes, bail is set at $0. So, what that has done to the jail population, I'll just give you a few numbers here. In February of 2020, the jail population was at about 970 inmates. April, after all sides worked very hard to reduce that population, jail population went down to 442 inmates. We did this, of course, to slow or prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our jail population. Since the bail schedule that was issued in July was set to expire in August, on August 21st, but that was extended for another 30 days. So, we are still at a $0 bail schedule for most nonviolent offenses. Now, an additional measure to reduce inmate population is taken by the sheriff, where the sheriff department and the court had developed a process in which the sheriff approaches the court directly with recommendations on early release for inmates that the sheriff has identified with underlying concerning health conditions. And that seems to have a great effect on the inmate population as well. Another strategy is working very proactively with the public defender and Defense Bar. All parties have been very intentional in trying to resolve cases quickly. And we've been employing strategies such as having senior attorneys handle negotiations. And DA's office has been making some extremely reasonable offers, particularly in those cases that don't involve violence, as a strategy to reduce the inmate population. Public defender has been very committed in working with their clients in an effort to reduce the inmate population as well. I can tell you all that between the shelter-in-place and today, we have received less cases for filing consideration. It appears that crime went down during the time the shelter-in-place was issued. In 2019, between March 17th and August 1st, DA's office filed 6,161 cases. In 2020, between March 17th and August 1st, for the same time period, we filed 3,848 cases. It seems as though the shelter-in-place had a huge impact on the frequency with which misdemeanor crimes were being committed. And so, long-term, short-term goals are very similar. We, of course, want to ensure public safety. We want to ensure the health protections of the inmate and workforce population. And of course, as I said in the beginning, always ensure constitutional rights of both defendants and victims. Thank you.
Thank you, Mari Sol. Now, supervisors, you have heard a great number of strategies that will address the underlying conditions that have contributed to the pandemic, the pandemic's impact in the communities of color throughout Monterey County, most specifically the Latino community. Now, we have found that there are barriers and challenges in each of the sectors that we review today. And there is a need for legislative advocacy, and of which we will hear some more details around that from Annette Di Addamo.
Good afternoon, board members. This is Annette Di Addamo with the County Administrative Office. And today, I'll be summarizing the legislative advocacy section of this report. And I'd like to start by noting that even before the pandemic, the county's legislative program focused on numerous health, human services, economic development, public safety, and administrative priorities that have served the county well during this challenging time. And the legislative program was written with the county's health and all policies strategy in mind as part of its efforts to eliminate social, racial, economic, and environmental inequities that impede the attainment and maintenance of good health, including healthcare access. So, since the pandemic began, the county has engaged in many, many advocacy efforts aimed at addressing the disproportionate impact it has taken on our communities of color. And just a few examples I'd like to go over with you today are that we've been in constant and continuous communication with our state and federal leaders communicating the county's challenges, advocating for direct funding for counties for response efforts, working to increase testing, working to ensure that PPE is available to essential workers, requesting that the state established a disaster relief fund for undocumented community members who didn't qualify for economic stimulus payments, requesting assistance with food security issues, wage supports, alternate housing, and many, many other things, requesting translation of state communications and guidance into Spanish, advocacy for all male elections, and support for the learning needs identified by the County Office of Education. Next slide, please. So, to build on our current efforts, there's a full list of recommended advocacy efforts outlined in your report. And I'll summarize these. The previous speakers touched on many of these areas. So, I'll try to be brief in kind of going over these. The first thing is the 2020 census. As you well know, achieving a complete count will ensure that the county receives its fair share of funding for essential programs and services. And importantly, it ensures that county residents are represented from the congressional level all the way down to the county supervisory districts. So, we will continue to support these efforts and communicate any challenges we have with our state and federal leaders. And can you go back to the previous slide? Thank you. Then, under state and federal support, we will be advocating for additional direct fiscal relief for counties, the maximum flexibility in use of funds, and the extension of the funding expenditure timelines. In the area of healthcare, our priority is we'll be expanding access to care through universal coverage, medical expansion, and several of the other strategies previously mentioned. Funding for public health departments to conduct essential activities like testing, case investigation, and contact tracing, and to enhance public health workforce staffing, infrastructure, and capacity. Increased funding for testing and testing supplies, and for state and local public health labs. Increased oversight and enforcement of commercial lab responsibilities. Next slide, please. For food security, we'll be supporting efforts to increase SNAP, CalFresh benefits, and expand or eliminate barriers to eligibility and support funding for local food banks and meal delivery programs. We'll continue to request the translation of state communications and guidance into Spanish. In the economic area, we'll support the continuation or reinstatement of increased unemployment benefits, including extending those benefits to undocumented workers, supporting additional economic stimulus payments to individuals, including funding for undocumented residents, support policies that expand sick and family leave, support funding some policies that protect workers through the provision of PPE and education on how to prevent virus contraction and transmission, and support efforts aimed at assisting minority-owned businesses. Next slide, please. And for broadband, we'll be supportive of efforts to secure funding for the expansion of broadband, especially to underserved areas of the county. There's been a lot of talk about the housing challenges. So, we will continue to be supportive of efforts to expand eligibility for alternate housing, support efforts to prevent evictions and foreclosures, support efforts that promote the development of affordable housing, support efforts to streamline processes that create barriers or delays in the development of affordable housing projects, and support for nonprofit housing developments through things like additional tax credits. and support for nonprofit housing developments through things like additional tax credits. Related to safety net and employment resources, we'll continue to support funding for basic assistance to households who work in lower-wage jobs and are underemployed or unemployed, and support for programs that prevent homelessness and rapidly resecure housing. Improvements to various programs that support these needs. Next slide, please. Under protecting youth and families, we'll support efforts to expand eligibility for isolation spaces for people experiencing domestic violence and protect youth at heightened risk for abuse and mistreatment, and support efforts to strengthen social programs and family resources. We'll continue to support improved access to safe, affordable, high-quality childcare. And finally, we'll continue to support the needs identified by the county office of education, which really center around broadband access, technology supports, PPE, rapid testing results, and the such, and removing barriers for access to higher education. Now, as you know, the state legislature has only one more week before the end of session this year. And to date, no special sessions have been announced. And the Congress is currently on recess and scheduled to return sometime after Labor Day. So in the coming weeks and months, we will continue to communicate the county's needs to our state and federal representatives. And as we move into the fall, we'll work with the department heads through the legislative committee and the board to identify priorities for the next session. And that concludes my report. Should you have any questions? I know that the county's federal legislative advocate, Brett Heberly, is on the Zoom call. And I think Ashley Walker, our state advocate, was also trying to join. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. I mentioned earlier that community engagement is a key strategy of this report and this, this particular initiative here. What we see is that there are many groups that have, have expressed interest. And in the time that we had to prepare this report and, and prepare to present this to you, we did have the opportunity to engage three particular groups in our community. One was Mamas que abogan por Salinas, mothers who advocate for Salinas, Mujeres en Acción, women in action, and COPA, communities organized for relational power in action. The invitation to engage with us will and has been extended to multiple other organizations, including the NAACP, the LULAC chapters of both North Monterey County Salinas and Monterey, Whites for Racial Equity, and the UFW Foundation, Building Healthy Communities, and Padres Unidos as well, among others. So we have a list that is included in our written report. Of the three groups that we did have the opportunity to engage in this short time, we saw some very clear trends within the, from, from, as we heard from all three groups. One particular area of interest for the groups was in contact tracing. How it works, learning about how it works, the communication about, you know, how, how do, how, what are the impacts, what are the potential, the potential risk that people have by participating in contact tracing? There's that general fear of, you know, my whereabouts or anything about me is further documented. And so community members really have a concern about participating in that and, and being questioned and, and just being a part of that. So a general understanding of what it is, how it works, what are the confidentiality parameters around that is something that was very critical and of concern. The access to, to adequate isolation or alternative housing was another area of concern. They were very pleased to hear what this report intends to do with our strategies. And, and they found that it is also of importance to communicate that, you know, who is eligible to access alternative housing programs or services? And does it also include individuals who do not have legal status and are here undocumented? And more information about that is something that they are definitely very interested in and had a lot to say. In addition to the CARES Act, how, how are local businesses accessing resources from CARES Act? And how does that protect their, their, their jobs in the event that they fall ill with, with the COVID disease? Or if they are under investigation while they're waiting their testing results? There were a lot of questions around that. And the ability for them to express and hear what our strategies are and what the communication strategies we are also implementing is something that they weighed in on and felt very much heard and valued. And, and they shared ideas and recommendations for how to move forward. And so that engagement is going to be continuous. We will continue to, to engage and, and share with these community groups. And clearly, the engagement is open to all groups and, and individuals who are interested in partaking and participating with providing their input and sharing of their ideas as well, and just hearing about the progress of our work as we move forward with implementing the strategies. So with that, I do want to thank again all of the, the team members who, who worked closely together over the last several weeks to, to put this report together and to strategize around what are the, the best ways in which we can address these issues and, and be realistic about it, be smart about it, and know how we can measure the impact of our strategies and our efforts moving forward and any of the investments that we make over time to, to bring forward these strategies with adequate resources. So at this time, supervisors, we will conclude our presentation. And we welcome your thoughts and questions and your direction to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Do I have any comments from board members before we go to the public? Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually just had a couple of questions before we get to comments. I see that, I mean, many of the, the longer-term strategies and some of the ways to address long-term inequities is going to take a lot of advocacy and careful policy consideration and solicitation of support at the state and federal level. And I was just wondering, it seems like a, maybe something like a study session at the ledge committee and/or the board could be really helpful in delving into some of these things a little bit further. And I wondered if that was under consideration at all.
Charles?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I think it's a good strategy to try to get deeper into the weeds of this and get some, you know, try to, you know, address some of the issues mainly surrounding the legislative components of it. And so I'd be certainly open to that through the, at the legislative committee. I'm not sure if there's also any other committees that might be relevant to try to get into things that aren't necessarily directly legislative-related. And if just direct to the board would be appreciated on any of those.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I should just say that I really appreciate the, the thoroughness of this report. Really a lot of good information in here. So thank you, everyone. And it was done really quite quickly in the scheme of things. So thank you very much for that. Something I know, Rosemary, you mentioned at the beginning that this was really largely about racial equities, inequities, and, and racism. But I, I also can see that for some of the impacts, particularly school closures and, and then online learning, there's going to be probably a disproportionate impact on women, especially low-income women. You know, when a parent has to stay home to provide childcare and manage the distance learning, that burden often falls on the, the woman, the mother. And so they would be then in the position of having to decide whether to remain in the workforce or work reduced hours. This affects their lifelong earning potential. It impacts their social security benefits in retirement and affects career advancement. So I guess, you know, even looking at the county, if, if county employees take advantage of reduced work hours, they may delay their opportunity for a step increase or, or, or promotion. And then that would increase the pay gap between men and women, you know, here. So was there, is there any thought about addressing this, this or other kinds of inequities other than the, the racial?
Thank you, supervisor. That's a great question. While the general focus of this report does, does lead with, with racial disparities, I mean, I think that you raise a very good point. And there is that the income, the, the income gap and definitely other, other areas that are affecting not just by race but gender. I think that that is something that we can certainly take a look at. We would probably have that data available to show for us in, in various sectors. I'm just thinking about how we can go back and review a little bit deeper as far as the, the gender-based impacts. So whether that be in our economic development sector of the House or other social services accesses or data sets that are available to us. So we'll definitely keep that in mind and, and look at that a little deeper.
I appreciate it. Again, thank you for a really well-put-together report. And I do have some comments as well, but those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Supervisor Alejo next.
Yeah, I had a question just on the data. Because the data presented by our team excluded the unknown cases, right? So it did, it did push up the percentages of Latinos who are impacted when that, when you take out the unknown numbers. And I then, during the presentation, I was looking at Santa Cruz County, San Benito County, and their unknown cases for race is less than 1%. I think Santa Cruz County is like point one, I mean, point two-nine, less than 1%. Whereas ours, the number that was put up on the screen was over 1,000 unknown. And the same, it still continues for occupations. 30% is unknown in terms of the occupations. And we were told weeks ago that we were behind because of the increased testing. But then we were also hiring more contract tracers. But that percentage, those numbers don't seem to be going down. And that's, I find that problematic after so long, still seeing a large number of unknown cases. And the same challenges we're facing are the same challenges Santa Cruz, San Clara, San Benito, San Luis Obispo. But I'm just, the question is, why, why haven't we brought that number down lower, like our neighboring counties? It continues to be such a large number of unknowns.
Maybe Kristi Mity could help us with that answer?
Sorry, my apologies, having a little trouble unmuting. So I, I think those are, those are valid concerns. Contact tracers do not investigate our cases. So while we have been very successful about bringing on contact tracers, we've had a harder time bringing on case investigators. Our case investigators have caseloads two and three times what other jurisdictions have. Most jurisdictions have caseloads of 20, ours have upwards of 60 to 75. We are prioritizing getting a hold of those cases and trying to get them isolated and see to their housing needs. And we, you know, have delayed some of our documentation. And we know that's an issue, but we, at this point, are still prioritizing doing the actual interventions with people over the documentations. And I, I thank you for sharing your concerns. And we will do our best to try to whittle down some of that backlog that, that we're dealing with.
No, I think, thank you, Kristi. I know you guys do got a lot of work. I recognize that. It just, my point was only because I seen it gone for so long. And it is concerning, just trying to have a more accurate picture of the impact rather than just removing a large set of numbers from the overall percentages. It'd be better to actually get the answers to those unknown or under investigation cases. But thank you for your answer. The, the other thing I just wanted to bring up was, I'm glad Lori brought up the broadband issue. Because I think we took some action on this last week. But, but I don't think it was included in the initial report. Certainly, when you look at the spectrum of adverse impacts of this pandemic, education and our children are certainly victims in a big way when they're not able to have their classroom education continue. And there's been, there's pictures being posted up on social media, one today, I believe it was in Salinas, by two little girls sitting outside of a Taco Bell with their laptops, trying to just get Wi-Fi. I think it bothers all of us, it should bother all of us, to see any of our children in that kind of a situation. But I think that's going on far too long. And, and certainly, this is something that our legislative team needs to keep working with, with their, our state representatives to really bring more research to address this in a significant way. Just saying hotspots and putting money out there seems like it's the quick answer. But some of these rural areas and homes and neighborhoods, it's going to take much more infrastructure investment to address this need. The only other two areas I really saw that weren't included were, were the impacts on rent. And again, we addressed this with the million dollars for rent and utilities, over a million dollars, 1.25 million for rent subsidies, that wasn't addressed. And I think the governor himself had pointed out that 62% of those impacted by being behind on the rent are Latino. So when we, when we look at that question, it's a, it's a significant portion of, of our residents, Latino residents that are, that are, that are being impacted by, by being behind on the rent. And certainly for us, that's, that's something that should, should be a focus. And I know we did, our legislative team did support or is considering supporting. I think it's going to come next week. But it's, it's the, the rent protections and eviction legislation that is before the legislature by, by Assembly Member David Chu. Because that's going to provide the statewide protection, hopefully, within the next two weeks before evictions may resume on September 2nd. The only other piece I would add was the farmworker piece. Because again, when we look at the occupation, another large, the largest group adversely impacted by COVID. And there's a lot of really good things that we have done, and even more that we just did last week with the fires. And, and I already mentioned it earlier today, the good work that our ag commissioner, Henry Gonzalez, and the ag associations did in putting the N95s at mask. I think Henry already ordered another 300,000 from the California Department of Food and Agriculture to have them ready, because we know that the, the bad air quality is going to continue for some time. But these are all, all model efforts. I saw a letter that Assembly Member Robert Rivas submitted today to the governor, emulating the efforts that were done here and trying to get more N95s out to farmworkers in other parts of the state. But these are all things that we didn't, we didn't wait or get direction from the state. We didn't, we didn't wait for an ask or, or the governor to act. These were local efforts that we were able to do immediately and, and, and help our residents in a big way. And then our neighboring counties following our lead. But these are all things that we should highlight, that we did act. And we are doing a lot of things in a, in a, in an efficient way to address some of these disparities. As they, as new challenges arise, like the fires, we were able to respond and address particular needs of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. I'll look to the Zoom again and see if I have any additional questions from supervisors. Seeing no hands up, I'll turn to the public and see if we have any public comment on this presentation. At this point, I don't see anybody in chambers. I have one hand up. I'm going to go to Sonia Kohler and ask her to go ahead and unmute yourself and give us a, a three-minute public comment. Sonia? Go and unmute yourself.
There we go.
There we go. Am I able, am I, I think I'm wrong.
You now.
Thank you. Thank you for the assistance and good afternoon. I'm Sonia Kohler, Director of the Bright Beginnings Early Childhood Development Initiative. As we come together in another state of emergency, please don't forget the need for stable, safe childcare to prevent the lifelong effects of adverse childhood experiences. Per this report on disparities, childcare is key to economic recovery, especially for those that have been most marginalized amongst us. As you have heard often, the availability of quality childcare has always been too low to meet our needs in Monterey County. And now our challenge is to have more and for the youngest and for schoolchildren at the same time. This is a challenge difficult even pre-COVID. Early childhood caregivers and educators are some of the most vulnerable of essential workers. Most are women of color in jobs hardly above minimum wage and at high risk of COVID exposure. And yet, they are over and over asked to step up, even for those that are more privileged than they. So how can we, Monterey County, step up? We can prioritize quality childcare and education, as your report says, and show it by directing significant emergency and economic development funds to this crucial industry. This could fund the offset of income lost due to COVID, such as smaller group sizes or retrofitting to accommodate physical distancing. We can establish startup incentives for new childcare businesses. This is meaningful, crucial work. And just as we heard, we have many struggling to find employment. Why is this possible in a time of competing priorities? There is public will, in fact, a public demand. We all see that we rely on childcare and distance learning supports for equitable recovery. This is our collective responsibility. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Looking to the Zoom, see if I have any additional hands up on the attendee side. I don't see any, so I'm going to go ahead and close that, bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. And I see Supervisor Mary Adams has her hand up. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend Rosemary Soto and all of her team for the work that they've done here. I think it was very thought provoking, and you can just see the the intensity of the work, the dedication that all of her team put together to to make this report just so thorough. I think it is sort of, it's certainly not the end. I think it's really more the beginning and a wonderful outline for what it is that we have ahead of us. My hope is that we'll be able to live up to the standard that her she and her team have set for us as supervisors, to really be able to follow through on the initiatives that are being put forward. They're really critical, and I sincerely hope that we're able to do a lot with this. I apologize for the weirdness of my video system today. I'll have to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We're going to go to Supervisor Phillips next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and and thank you, Rosemary, for excellent presentation along with a lot of the others ones. And it is, when you look at the Latino population, it was listed at 61% and positivity rate of 70 or 93%. That's concerning, obviously. But when you consider farm workers, that they're living in crowded environment, and I I know that firsthand because when I used to take, when I was running Ranches C.O., I used to take kids home to parts of the Aliso, and I saw the crowded conditions they live in, you you could understand some of it. But living in a crowded environment, traveling in that, working in in that environment, you you can understand why their their positivity rate's higher than than others. I think we've, of all the places in the state, I think we've done a lot more than anyplace else with our testing push, our PPE mask, or having housing and developing housing for those who test positive, the public relations and and getting the word out to them. And a lot of that's due to Ag Commissioner Henry Gonzalez. But two of my colleagues, Supervisor Leo and Lopez, Dr. Moreno, the Farm Bureau, the Growers, Shippers, and the Tivitad Hospital, I think all those have come together. And some of the things that we need to focus on, I think, we started already with what we did with the CARES Act, was mentioned by Supervisor Leo, with the $1 million for the digital divide and broadband, $1 million for rental assistance. To me, the the key thing that we could focus on that does the most is affordable housing with safe drinking water in the housing. The other things are universal access to Internet and broadband, healthcare, and it was mentioned, I firmly believe, in in childcare and preschool for everybody. And I might just add, we're talking about where to go from here. I I happened to get notified that the California Wellness Foundation just today came out with a $11.3 million grant for COVID-19 relief as it relates to racial justice. So there may be some abilities, I don't know whether the county can apply for that, but maybe some nonprofits in our area can work for that to put some money where our mouths are. But excellent report. Thank you for it. And I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. We're going to go to Supervisor Parker next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues and also of Sonia Kohler. I think, you know, it's interesting, this whole idea of investing in childcare as part of our economic recovery. It's not only a short term, you know, strategy to help get people who may not have their job coming back, you know, give them some employment, but also such a key investment in our future. We know that it's one of the highest returns on investment. So I think that's a really intriguing idea. And of course, that's what we heard from the community, that early childhood development was one of their key priorities for any of our funding, but particularly with cannabis. So appreciate Supervisor Phillips bringing up this other possible source of of funds. A couple of comments, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the way that the social determinants of of health were in the report and they were spoken to. There, I would have liked to see some more strategies related to some of them, but you know, it's just important to get to get started. One of the things, let's see, I wanted to just say, in terms of the, I have various comments, and they're they're more or less in order of the pages of the report, but it's going to jump around just a little bit. Really concerned about the contact tracing, as the community organizations mentioned, I think it's really important to make sure that we've got bilingual, bicultural folks that we and maybe use the community organizations to help recruit some contact tracers who can be trusted, sort of, you know, the situation we had with the census, you know, if people are feeling iffy about being contacted by people because of their status and so on, really could be an interesting strategy. The expanding eligibility for the alternate housing, I think that's a good idea. But again, I think some of it is communication and outreach. And there again, I think the some of the community organizations could be helpful. Access to healthcare, I it was mentioned, you know, supporting healthcare for all, I think, is critical. So many people will not be returning to an employer who maybe before provided healthcare, but it's it's still, it's a very spotty system. And if we're really wanting to address health disparities, we need to make sure that we're allowing people the access to healthcare. And we also, I think it would be good to have a really clear population health strategic plan. I think that also speaks to some that may be able to address some of the the health The digital divide, I think, working, you know, we have committed some money, but I I really felt that the information that we got about the need and how to be most effective with our investment, the information just wasn't there. I'd really like to see us have a plan put together with maybe the broadband consortium and other people, you know, the educational community. The question of computers and online access was mentioned several times in the report, but I worry if we're just doing a little bit over here and a little bit over there, I think it would be really good to have a a much more comprehensive idea of where the needs are. You know, some of its connectivity and some of its devices. So really being clear about what's needed and then where we might be able to play a role. I also would love to see sort of along the lines of population health, but an expanded list of public health strategies. There there was mention of them as it related to COVID-19, but, you know, early childhood development and, you know, home visitations to, you know, new parents, prenatal care, breastfeeding. I mean, some of these things are public health strategies that really have profound impacts on the quality of people's lives, you know, in the short term and in the the long term. In terms of housing, two things there. The Monterey Bay Economic Partnership has some suggested policies to increase affordable housing that are shorter, you know, shorter term, not too complicated, not as complicated as trying to build structures. I also think it's important that we have in our report that we're going to coordinate with cities so that we're developing additional affordable housing closer to jobs. And there's a a group meeting on the Monterey Peninsula to really talk about that within the cities there. Thinking about housing, this is it's housing, but it's also just wealth disparities. You know, one of the big factors for the African American community, certainly, and I I know less about it as it relates to the Hispanic population, but wealth inequities exist due to decades of housing discrimination, overt explicit discrimination. And I think in our advocacy at the federal level in particular, but the state as well, it would be good to be in conversations with, you know, Congressional Black Caucus or some of the other caucuses where we can come up with strategies about how to at least partially remedy some of that. Economic development, I think it's mentioned in the report, but I wanted to just highlight that, again, we're we're having a major disruption to our employment situation. And it mentioned somewhere that we should try to return people to living wage jobs. They didn't have living wage jobs to begin with, a lot of these people. So we need to return the ones to their living wage jobs if they had them, but attract and establish more of those. But then also really look at for certainly a period of time, you know, three to five years, we may need to expand some concept of basic income, just so people don't fall further down the the economic ladder, expand, what's it called, earned income tax credit, you know, different things like that, where we can make sure that people, families have the 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 economic resources they need to take good care of themselves and their and their families. I noticed the the justice system, really some good items in there, but I think we could look at some, there are probably some more long term strategies that could be in that in that section. Food security, I think that, you know, the school nutrition program, now we see how important that is. If there are barriers to that program, we should be working now to remove those. And I think in terms of the childcare, I really like Sonia Kohler's idea. I think, you know, beyond saying, let's support, you know, quality childcare, we need to make sure it's affordable. And we need to not just say we're going to support it, but let's work with our local partners on what some strategies can be, in addition to getting the the funding to pay these important workers well enough that, again, they can support their families. And we take care of that particular disparity there. And then, of course, it wasn't in the report because we're only just now starting to talk about it. But I think, as Supervisor Phillips mentioned this morning, as the conversation goes forward about educational hubs, we really need to look at not creating disparities and really making sure that there may be ways for our county libraries to work together with school districts and parents to bring resources to bear. But we need to, I think, keep a close eye on that because education is one of those social determinants of health, along with, you know, income and just, I don't know, stress from the social and physical environment, employment. So really appreciate the report. It really got me thinking, and I really look forward to working with all of our community partners and our departments on really moving a lot of these initiatives forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. Let me make sure I've got the full Zoom backup. I see Supervisor Adams has her hand up. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. A few things have been said that just sparked a couple of questions or comments for me as well. And as a question, I was wondering if there is any prioritization to the strategies that start on page eight. I mean, everything is so important, but I was just wondering if there's any any prioritization of the strategies. And then, so if I could get that question answered first, and then I'll ask my other one. Is Rosemary still available?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. Sorry, it took me a minute to a second to unmute. I think that that is a natural next step, is to look at what is what will be our prioritization process as far as what are the 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 strategies that are a little bit more readily accessible for us to move on quicker. Some are already in place, are already in motion, as as you heard some of those strategies described. And we'll definitely have a continuous conversations among our team and and determine what is our prioritization process. And again, that's another opportunity in which community can weigh in and provide input on that process as well. Thank you for your question.
Absolutely. And then, this is an additional question, sort of comment. With the strategies that are related to sick leave, family care protections, and increased Internet access, they only included long term strategies. And I I know that there are systemic solutions to be sought, but I'm afraid that, at this point, we're seeing the impact on women and children really highlighted in the in the sick leave family care protection area. So I think it's important for us to really aggressively pursue some short term strategies, or else we're going to lose a generation of women, which is something that Jane had commented on in the workforce, as well as see the health and and welfare of children suffer. So I just was hopeful that when you do look at the prioritization, that's that sick leave and family care protections will be close to the top and that you will be able to to find some short term strategies that that we can all work on. And I again would would just simply say that I hope that you will be honest with us as a board on how we can be more supportive to support in this work, to support staff throughout the county, to be able to really address some of the the barriers, the institutional barriers faced by communities of color and gender that the pandemic has really brought so accurately acutely into focus for us.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. I guess that leaves me. And I all I have to say is yes to everything, absolutely. You know, as I as I heard the conversation happening, it just, I was having so many flashbacks to conversations I've had with members of my community about how they're being impacted. Those conversations we heard just last week about from the Gonzales youth telling us about kids who are playing that role. I know Supervisor Parker was talking about the women who are being perhaps drawn in closer to the home in order to be able to teach and losing that opportunity and those future gains in terms of their pay. And I thought about those kids that are losing something as well by having to play the role of teacher or mother and father as they stay home to help their younger siblings and yet have to play catch up on their own time and the anxiety that that creates in their world. And I think about our behavioral health system, again, coming back to that conversation and the needs there. It starts at home, it starts with home, it starts with having a place to It starts at home, it starts with home, it starts with having a place to call your own and a, you know, a dedicated space to have silence. I was actually approached by a few kids this weekend, both online and in person, as I did work around the fires. It brought up, you know what we need are noise canceling headphones. I have siblings and I can't hear my teacher because my sibling's talking on their class and I'm over here and I don't have my own space and noise canceling headphones would be a huge help. You know, and it's, but if you don't even have service and you're sitting outside of Taco Bell to get that service, then where, where do we start? I think there's so many needs in our community and demands. And I believe that this board is committed to being part of that solution. We've shown that through our actions and I think that we're not stopping, we're not resting on our laurels, we're moving forward. And one of those other ideas that kind of came to me as we went through this conversation is expanding the conversation within the Health, Housing and Human Services Committee. Because with all those H's in there, they all tie together on this conversation that we're having now. And for me, one of those keys is last week, in the middle of all, everything else going on, I got a call from somebody who told me that they were no longer going to be pursuing their housing development for farm workers and it was due to waiting on, on studies. You know, and it's just that they've been in a holding pattern for eighteen months. And they said, you know, it's just, we're going to move forward trying to find a hotel or do something different. And I think that's too, too often the story when we have the ability and people with the capacity to build and the policies that are in place discourage that. And I know they're not always ours. In this case, it's a state policy. If you're within the, a mile of a city, you have to connect and then those connections aren't just yeses. It leads to issues, right? And so how do we start working on those, understanding the, the needs of our communities? When we talk about children and zero to five and the need to get off to a strong start, I've got a kid that's less than one and I see the demands on, on our little family at home. And I think about the families that, that don't have all of the privilege that I was raised with and the privilege that my wife has in terms of being able to have her parents there on site. And yet the demands still weigh on us. And I think about those that don't have those resources and what that must feel like every single day, knowing what it feels like for us with that privilege. And so I think for that, that, our community's still out there watching. We know, we know what you're going through and we're here to help as we go through this. We're looking at these policies with a keen eye to improving the quality of life in Monterey County. And it's not a big concept, it's about you sitting at home. Maybe it's two or three in the morning and you're, you're nursing the baby or you can't sleep because you've got stress on you because you don't have as much income as you had maybe a few months ago before COVID. But if you're sitting there tonight watching this or you're sitting there at some other time, know that it's you. You're the person we're trying to positively impact, every single person living in Monterey County. We're, we're doing all of this, we're talking about these efforts we've already done, not resting there saying, this is a great start. How do we keep going? How do we push the envelope further to improve life in Monterey County? Of course, we know the impacts are greater on certain communities and we want to stay focused on that equity question because it helps to lift all boats. When we all do better, when, when someone does better, we all do better as a community. And so with that belief in my heart, I just want to say that I'm so appreciative of every single staff member here who brought forward the perspective of their department to show us what they've done, but also what we can do. And to raise, raise the awareness of the issues that you, you can bring forward to us and know that this board supports that. Bring those forward to us so that we can address those. That's why we're here and don't be afraid of the hard conversations. I know I said that when I took over as chair and we've had some of those this year and there's opportunity for more. So bring those conversations to us. Let's talk about how we improve quality of life for every person living in Monterey County through your efforts. Because I know all of you lead with a servant's heart and that means you got into this work because you believe that you can make the world better for people living here in Monterey County. And I'm standing here with you, along with the rest of my board members, saying let's do it together. So bring those issues forward. Don't let the work stop here. And Rosemary, thank you for your leadership and putting together this incredible group of people to help bring forward the change. We really appreciate it. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back to our CAO for some comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's obviously, you know, the daunting task, a lot of these, but it's something that, you know, we don't shy away from. And I think that's from the leadership of the board is recognizing that, taking on these hard tasks. So I, I think you've had a couple of good suggestions here about study sessions, both at the Ledge Committee and maybe the, the Health, Housing and Human Services Committee or whatever the actual title is. And so I guess if we could get a, maybe a motion to, to push to those two committees or elsewhere to say that, you know, let's start with some study sessions there to try to prioritize and get some, you know, meat on the bones as far as moving forward. That might be the, the most effective way of going forward.
That's a great question. I've got a motion from Supervisor Parker. Supervisor Phillips or Adams, would you second that?
Second.
I've got a motion from Parker, a second from Phillips. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Leo? Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. And can we check back in with Supervisor?
Aye. Aye.
Perfect. Thank you Supervisor. Five oh. So that carries and with that, our work today is done. I'm going to turn to County Council and see if we have anything to report at a closed session.
Nothing to report today, Chair.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.